Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's 6:30. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the planning board for, let's see, what is today? May 2, 2023. Let's begin as we always do with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Let me, let's see, our regular housekeeping items. Let's remind everybody that we'll address the board to make sure the microphone is turned on and to speak clearly into it so the recording will catch all the important details. Please also be sure that you identify yourself for the record. Our minutes are prepared from the record, so it's important to have that good recording. Let's see, because no new applications were received for the May 16 meeting, we won't have one in a second May meeting, and our next one will be June 6, 2023, at 6:30 PM in this, the Matthew Thornton Room. Let's see, how are we fixed for alternates and full members? One, two, three, I get seven. Seven's a full board, so anybody here that's an alternate is in a voting position tonight. Robert, you can sort out the who's who for that. All seven members are voting positions. Let's see, that brings us to our consent agenda. What is the will of the board with respect to the consent agenda? It contains one item.
Second.
Lynn moves approval. Counselor Healy moves second. Is there any discussion that can't be for a consent agenda? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 7-0-0 to approve the consent agenda. The third item on our agenda is our annual meeting where we do two things: elect officers and review the rules of procedure. The staff has provided us a draft which proposes some modifications to our rules of procedure. Has everyone had a chance to review those?
Yes.
Yes.
Does anyone have any comment about the staff's recommendations?
Nelson? I think they're okay.
I think they're okay?
They make sense.
Okay. Will someone, any member of the board willing to make a motion to adopt the staff's recommendation for the rules of procedure?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the change rules of procedure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 7-0-0 to approve the rules of procedure. That brings us to the election of officers, for which we have two: a chair and a vice chair. Are there any nominations from the board?
I like how we're running.
Me too. So I move-
They don't get a chance.
I move Barb Best for chair.
And Paul McGough for vice chair.
Paul McGough. Is there a second for Barb's motion?
I'll second.
Thank you for that. I, a couple of comments. One is I'm really glad to have Paul in the role of vice chair. I think he's done a fabulous job, and more than any year since I've been the chair, he's had to stand in for me as I've had other meetings, and I really love having that ability to do that, and I thank him for that. Second, as I always do, and I never want to stop doing, I want to share with you that it's a privilege to be elected by you for that role, and it's not something I take lightly. I'm glad to do it. I don't hate the idea that someday maybe somebody else will want to do it, but-
Dream on.
Well, if you want me to be here, I'll be here. So with that, I don't have any other comments with respect to that. Thank you for the honor and the privilege of having that appointment. I think this is 12 years now as the chair, and Nelson, I haven't caught up with you just yet, but-
Little ways to go.
Little ways to go.
Hang in there.
Still probably the only two men alive to have been in this seat, right?
It's true.
With that in mind, all in favor of the election of officers say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Count me as an abstention, so 6-0-1 for the election of officers. That concludes our annual meeting. The item four on our agenda is the only real application item we have to deal with today. Merrimack Parcel A LLC as the applicant, and Merrimack Parcel A LLC and Slate Merrimack Acquisition LLC as the owners. Continued review for consideration of an amendment to a previously approved mixed-use development conditional use permit, calling for replacement of 93,720 square feet of office space, 37,400 square feet of retail, 15,800 square feet of restaurant space, and a 5,000-square-foot event center as part of Phase 2, replacing all of that with 178 multifamily residential units, 5,000 square feet of office space, 7,400 square feet of retail space, 8,000 square feet of restaurant space, and an increase of the 7,600 square feet of restaurant space approved as part of Phase 1 to 8,000 square feet, as well as a reduction of the 120-room hotel approved as part of Phase 1 to 110 rooms. The parcels are located at 1, 2, 3, and 4 Lexington Court in the I-2 industrial and aquifer conservation districts and Wellhead Protection Area, tax map 3C lot 191-2U1, 191-2U4. It's Case Planning Board 2023-5. It's continued from our April 4, 2023, planning board meeting. Robert, I've never had an item that's so difficult to read as this one, but tell us what we need to know before we hear from the applicant.
Just by a quick way of summary, because I'm sure the applicant's going to go into this in much greater detail. This version of this amended application is actually revised from what the board last saw when the applicant was here a couple of months ago. Key changes would be a reduction in residential units from the 208 that were originally proposed to 178. The hotel was increased from 100 rooms to 110, and the total square footage of non-residential development, which excludes the hotel, was moderately increased by 5,500 square feet from 14,500 to 20,000. Just basically by way of summary, staff still, despite the changes, is opposed to the amendment because we do not feel that it meets the criteria in the zoning ordinance. But with that, I would just turn it over to the applicant and let them make their presentation so the board can get into questions and go from there.
Thank you, Robert. Come forward. As always, please introduce yourself for the record, and then tell us what you want us to know about that proposal.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Morgan Hollis. I'm attorney at Gottesman &amp; Hollis, 39 East Pearl Street in Nashua, and I'm here representing the owner and the applicant. I apologize-
Morgan, please turn your mic on. I don't think you're on, yeah.
Here we go. I apologize. I've got a bad allergy, but I'll just lean into the mic a bit. I'm going to start again. My name is Morgan Hollis. I'm an attorney at Gottesman &amp; Hollis, 39 East Pearl Street in Nashua, and I'm here representing the owner and the applicant as read in by the chair. We are here for the application as presented and read in as well. I'm going to give some background, not that most of you don't know this, and certainly receive the memo, and the memo is in, from Tim Thompson is in great detail, so you do know this, even if you weren't part of the planning board during most of this. I think for the record, it's important to note that this is the first time this plan has been presented, so Gordon Leedy will be presenting it in detail as to what we've done, what's being asked, and what's being shown, and also why it meets the requirements of the conditional use permit. Historically, this project, of course, predates 2015. It goes back as far as when the Merrimack Premium Outlets was here, and I was here, and Nelson was chair during all those hearings. And there was a proposal for what might go on in this site as part of the mixed-use operation. Fast forward to 2015, when a concrete plan was put in place by the current owner, and that plan included a mixed-use development. And mixed-use development is not allowed under your ordinance under I-2, so application was made to the zoning board of adjustment for a mixed-use development under a conditional use permit, which would have to come back to this board. And the parcel at the time was presented as variances were needed because it was in the wrong zone. I-1 zone allows mixed-use development, but not I-2. It was less than 50 acres. It was without frontage, and it was more density than was allowed under the residential density per the PUD, which is connected to the CUP ordinance. So all of that was presented to the zoning board of adjustment. At the time, the plan presented showed 140,500 square feet of retail, 160,000 square feet of office, 100,000 square feet of a hotel, 140,000 square feet of residential, and 1,152 parking spaces. It was approved at the time, subject to obtaining a CUP and a site plan from this board. In 2017, after working through the required planning process, it was presented to the planning board, and the planning board approved the mixed-use CUP of 388,524 square feet, which included 39,275 square feet of retail, 120-room hotels, 7,500 square feet of a conference center, 23,275 square feet of restaurant space, 192 units of multifamily residential, 448 units of a parking garage, and 97,770 square feet of office. That was a different mix than the zoning, but it was allowed to proceed forward and was approved as a conditional use permit, mainly because it was less intense than what was presented to the zoning board in most aspects. In 2018, the planning board approved a slight modification, notably including conditions of the applicant, conditions of approval, which were that the applicant addressed the comments of the wastewater division and the forthcoming comments of Merrimack Village District. The reason I raise that is, at that time of the application, we didn't get final answers out of the wastewater division, nor out of the MVD, and it was kicked over to the site plan. And I raised that specifically because that's one of the issues raised in Tim's memo that you will have to deal with. Assuming we touch all other basis of the CUP, it'll be up to the planning board to decide whether our response to the wastewater division requirements and the MVD requirements for utility provision is adequate, and you can make it a condition of approval. I only urge you to consider that in your past approvals, it was always a condition of approval. On February, in February and September of 2019, the planning board approved additional amendments changing residential, office, and commercial locations and the phasing, as well as changing the square feet of the retail down to 37,4, and the office down to 93,720, and the residential units up to 224. Then in early 2021, the applicant approached the staff about a further amendment, and this would be a significant change of the office or and some of the commercial applications and uses for swapping them out for residential. And the staff determined at the time that this was a significant change and would need to go to the ZBA. The proposal to the staff and subsequently presented to the ZBA was for the swap-out of commercial space for 208 units. Obviously, the 208 units on the parcel of land, as you know from Tim's memo, is a dense application of residential use per acre, and it exceeds the residential use per acre which is allowed under your CUP requirements, which refers to the PUD requirements, which has a density restriction of so many units per acre. The zoning board of adjustment granted the variance for density, allowing the mixed-use development CUP to be sought from the planning board at a higher residential density than previously approval by variance up to 208 units. Those are the exact words of the approval. February 22, so between April and February 2022, the applicant's development team came up with a concept plan and presented to the planning board and made an application to the planning board, that is, showing the 208 units in place of the 93,000 square feet office and parking garage, and a reduction in retail and some modifications to the restaurant space as well. On April 1, 2022, the applicant received a staff memorandum commenting on the number of residential units versus the prior approval, and as well as several other concerns. This was the first time the applicant heard from anyone that the proposed 208 units, as presented to the zoning board of adjustment and to the staff, was a problem. And so April 15, it was presented to the planning board, and then you all again supported the staff's position that you felt that this was too dense. There wasn't any specific provisions cited because it was a concept plan, and you don't get into those details, but the message was out, and so the team regrouped. This was in April of 2022. The team regrouped, revised plan, and returned to the planning board with a different concept, but the same number of units. You were very kind. In October, on October 25, 2022, the applicant received a six-page memorandum from Tim Thompson pointing out several concerns, but now specifically identifying the 208 units as exceeding acceptable density. And in November of 2022, this board was kind enough to review the concept and supported that position and provided comments in a very kind way that there are too many units, and as well as several other concerns, questions about open space, et cetera. We made some inquiry about appropriate number of units and whether units for affordable housing would be more appropriate, and there wasn't any response from either the planning board or the staff as to what is an appropriate number of units, just that 208 is not an appropriate number. The design team regrouped, sought to discuss this with Mr. Thompson, had a meeting with the town manager. Mr. Thompson was there, reviewed the ordinances. Certainly got the message from this board about 208 being too many, and in January designed and prepared a plan showing a significant reduction in units, and that is the plan that is before you now. That's reduced by 40 units, which is 20% from what the density allowed by the variance is at 208 units. So again, we're sort of presenting what we feel fits and meets all the conditions of approval. I don't want to call it a guessing game, but since we're not getting guidance as to what is appropriate, it really is a guessing game. So I think that's important to understand because as a lawyer, that's not how I like to present matters to a planning board. I like to know what the regulations are. I like to know what the requirements are, and we're not there yet. In any event, a new plan was submitted, changing the mix by increasing the hotel rooms, as has been read in by Mr. Price, by 10, increasing the restaurant, commercial, and retail space by 5,000 square feet. And those increases, by the way, are, while they may not seem like much, and in fact, the memo says a minor increase of 5,000 square feet. It's a 33% increase from the last concept plan. So we've had substantial changes, and we bring that before the board. We did receive a memorandum from Tim, and it identified several potential concerns in addition to his past density issues. He still wasn't satisfied with the density. But of those issues identified, there were probably six or seven that, as I alerted the staff to, I thought we could address before the meeting, so we didn't have hanging issues out there, and I think we have addressed them to the staff and submitted documents to this board, which hopefully you've received. And I have two consultants here this evening to address those. We received a revised memo from Tim dated April 27, and we're going to try to address that memorandum in addition to the presentation we're going to make tonight. With all due respect to Tim, and if Tim were here, I would say the same. I've worked with Tim for over 20 years. I know him well and respect his opinions, but I believe in this case, his interpretation and opinion, in particular with regard to purpose and with regard to dimensional density regulations, is incorrect. We respectfully disagree. We'll point out why. However, I'd like to present the details of the application and the plan first and make our case that we meet all the criteria. I'm going to ask that each of you listen to the presentation, bearing in mind, if you will, the ordinance provisions and how we meet them. As a preface to my comments on Tim's memo, I would simply say that, to no one's surprise here this evening, I believe the single and only issue before the board is Tim's concern about two provisions: 2024D1, which is purpose, and 2024D4, which is dimension regulations. And in particular, the issue of the number of residential units as density not meeting the dimensional requirements. As I said, we strongly disagree. I think I ask you to bear in mind exactly what the purpose of your ordinance says as to conditional use permits, mixed-use developments. "The purpose of this section is to permit mixed uses, which allow the creative integration of industrial, commercial, and residential housing developments based on a master site development plan that permits flexibility in the design and integration of the permitted uses contained therein. The permitted mixed uses are intended to be complementary, so as to provide for the appropriate use of the land, fiscally beneficial development, the efficient provision of public services, and expanded opportunities for a diversity of residential development outside the traditional residential districts." The key words are, "We're supposed to come up with a creative integration plan." The plan has to permit flexibility in design and integration of the permitted uses. It has to provide for the appropriate use of the land, fiscally beneficial development, and provision of public services. But most importantly, it's supposed to provide for expanded opportunities for a diversity of residential development outside the traditional residential districts. We are outside the traditional residential districts, and we're in a different world. So bear that purpose in mind, because I know in Tim's memo, he says to you that this plan does not meet that purpose, but he doesn't recite what provision of the purpose it doesn't meet. And I don't think there is any part of that purpose this plan doesn't meet. Section 202.4.D.4, dimensional requirements, is a little bit different. And without getting into too much detail, 202.4.D.2 is permitted uses, and under permitted uses subsection D, residential uses are permitted within, are permitted as permitted within the PUD district under section 15. Note that the residential density calculations under this subsection shall be based upon that portion of the parcel set aside for residential use. If you turn to the PUD section, section 15, section 15.04.B. says, "Total residential densities in a PUD shall be in accordance with Table 1." If you turn to Table 1, it has the maximum density of 7 to 8 dwelling units per acre. That is the density that's permitted under the ordinance. However, based upon the staff's determination that the proposed addition of 208 new additional units was different, the ZBA heard the case and granted relief from the ordinance. And the relief from the ordinance is the relief from that table. And the relief that was granted is up to 208 units. I would respectfully argue that the word "density," as covered under Tim's memo, is off the table. The only issue is whether what we propose as density, it's allowed by the density given by the ZBA, but whether or not that density, as proposed, and in our case, it's 178 units, whether that density falls within the criteria of the CUP. You can only judge this application under the criteria of the CUP. You cannot judge it under any other. You can't judge it under the PUD. You can't judge it under the dimensional requirements of the PUD because we have a variance. A variance, as you know, would be like if you wanted to build a housing project in a residential zoning district, and you went to the zoning board of adjustment and said, "I'm only allowed five houses, but I've got a unique situation. I need relief, and my relief is I would like 10 houses." And the zoning board says you can have 10 houses. That takes care of the entire issue of what the density is that's permitted density. That's what the zoning board did. It still flips it back to you to decide whether that density fits under the CUP. But Tim spends a great deal of time arguing that density falls under the dimensional requirements. And I am here to suggest that it does not, simply because your ordinance splits out density versus dimensional. It does so under the CUP, where it says, "In one instance, density is calculated by PUD, and dimensional is under another section." It does so in several sections within your ordinance. Notably, the most notable one, the one I'm most familiar with, is the ordinance that covers the outlet village shops under the CUP. "The outlet village shops shall have the following: density, dimensional, and parking requirements." So it doesn't say "dimensional." It says "density, dimensional, and parking." So when you have law that differentiates between two different words, you can't jumble them together and say, "Well, density falls under dimensional, therefore under dimensional." Planning board can do a lot of things. Even if you accept Tim's definition of "dimensional," I still believe that, at this point, there is a problem in that he references, in his memo, section 2.02.4.D.4, "allows the planning board in its sole discretion to require more or less stringent dimensional requirements than those referenced." That's what he hangs his entire memo on. But he forgets the second sense, the second portion of that provision, which says, and again, I'm assuming you will have to agree with his definition of "dimensional" as including density. And if you do agree with that, you still have to read the second provision, second portion of that provision because it says, "The reason you can alter it more or less is to facilitate the integration and connections between mixed-use areas being developed and to provide reasonable buffering and separation between proposed residential, commercial, and industrial uses." That's the purpose of what "dimensional" is: setbacks, spaces, height. Those are dimensional requirements. Density is totally different, number of units per acre. Could locate those units in different places. That would be dimensional, based on what setbacks you're in. But the density is covered by the variance. That having been said, I'll reserve my final conclusion for after we present the plan. But I thought it was important to tee up so you understand where we're coming from. We're not just here refusing to listen to anybody. While we may disagree with what the ordinance had to say and what Tim has to say about that ordinance, we think we have a proper reading, and we think the focus should be on the criteria. Does this meet the criteria of the CUP? I know you weren't happy that this changes significantly what was originally approved, but the question isn't whether it changes significantly, it's whether this application meets the criteria. As I said at the beginning, your comments did not fall on my client's deaf ears. He has reduced it, modified it, changed it, and he's back here with a plan that he feels, well, not ideal, and not as much as, as you know, developers want to have 10 pounds in a five-pound bag. Not as much as he would like to have, but he feels it meets what message was given to him, and it meets the criteria. So with that, I would turn it over to Gordon.
Thank you, Morgan. For the record, my name is Gordon Leedy, and I am a landscape architect and certified planner with Ty &amp; Bond in Portsmouth, New Hampshire, here representing the owner and applicant. As Morgan indicated, you know, there were several comments that came out of the discussion that we had with the board in January. Potential impacts to the neighborhood from building height and lighting, the need for additional open space available to residents and the public, and looking for an overall reduction in residential density. So we did modify the plan. We modified the plan to reduce residential density in Phase 2 by 14%. We increased open space in the Phase 2 area by 25%, and I'll talk a little bit more about the comparison of those plans in a moment. We reduced the building height along the northerly side of the Phase 2 area adjacent to the Sargent Acres. sergeant acres development by 20%. And we modified the building configuration to eliminate balconies and porches, so that we would have less potential impact on neighbors. We amended the fiscal impact study to reflect the modified building program. Still showing a positive fiscal impact from the development program. We amended the traffic memorandum to reflect the modified building program, and we have a further reduction in peak hour traffic impacts, well within the capacity of the area transportation network to accommodate the traffic. And we confirmed utility availability from MVD and the town. And just on that, Dave Fenstermacher from VHB is here and has had those discussions with the departments, but I wanted to just sort of go back to what happened when the outlet mall was developed and approved. There was a development agreement that was executed by all the parties in the town that capped water usage from the site at a number. And we've been working, and Simon has been working, within those constraints all along. And not for nothing, that number also will reflect, as water usage does, will reflect sewer usage. So there's a finite limit that has been agreed to by the town and by the departments for water and sewer availability. Now, the details of conveyance, and pressure, and, you know, all of that stuff, that's something that needs to be studied and designed, but that's part of the site plan process. That is not part of this process. So I just wanted to sort of get that on the table. So this is the revised plan. We, I don't know whether, I do have a pointer. We reduced this section of the building to three stories, or, you know, two stories above the podium parking, rather than four stories. So that lessens the potential impact on the neighbors. We added office space to this portion of this building as a second floor, perhaps co-working space, or some professional office space. We kept the 5,000 square feet of commercial space in the residential building to kind of bookend this entrance boulevard as you come in and provide an activated streetscape coming into the development. And importantly, we added a significant open space in the center courtyard that would be available for use by residents of this building, as well as the public. But, I mean, there is no proposal to publicly dedicate open space as a part of this development. It will be open to customers and residents, and by extension, to the public, but it's not public open space, if you will. And we have 178 proposed apartments, 7,000-square-foot clubhouse and management office, 110-room hotel, 5,000 square feet of office space, 7,400 square feet of commercial space, and 8,000 square feet into restaurant spaces. And here are some views of, some of you have seen this before, but this is the increased height building in the commercial area, the hotel beyond, the existing residential beyond that. This is another view of the streetscape. And along the north side of the building, you can see how this building steps down so that it has a reduced, kind of looming factor over adjacent properties. And then this sort of shows that access to the open space and the surrounding building. So we've already talked about that. So we wanted, there was a lot of discussion about the amount of open space that is in the development. And in order to compare apples to apples, in this case, we took the approved CUP plan from August 2019, and calculated, you know, split out the Phase 2 area, which is outlined in red here. And as an apples-to-apples comparison, we calculated the open space within this Phase 2 area. And for the approved CUP, we come up with 32% open space, approximately 97,500 square feet. Then fast forward to April 21, which was the last plan that you saw on a conceptual We again calculated the Phase 2 area, and we had somewhat less open space at 91,900 square feet, representing 30% of the Phase 2 area. So then, this new plan, amended plan, has 114,900 square feet, which is 37% of the lot area, which, not for nothing, would comply with your, you know, current site plan regulations, I believe, of 35% open space. And then overall, with the buffer area, and the stormwater management area, and some of these other open space areas that are adjacent to the Phase 1 portion of the site, we actually have 52% of the 28th site, which is dedicated to open space. So we think that the addition of this large central open space in the Phase 2 area available to residents is a great improvement, and actually represents approximately 25% increase in open space from the previously proposed plan. In terms of building height, I wanted to just draw your attention to what was approved as a part of the previous CUP. The top building is, these two drawings are at the same scale. So the top building is a 600-space parking garage on six levels, and then a four-level office building, which was the general configuration that was shown in that plan. It's about 66 feet tall, I think, is what the number is. And at the bottom, we have the reduced-scale residential building, which is more like 45 feet for most of this building elevation on the north side. And at the highest point, the parapet is approximately 66 feet. But we've reduced the number, the height of the building adjacent to the residential, the adjacent residential neighborhood significantly from the previous proposal. So let's, we talked a little bit about the purpose and the master site development plan. Morgan talked a little bit about this. The master site development plan has several criteria, or the CUP has several criteria, one of which is to submit a master site development plan that has specific details of improvements. We have submitted that plan, and the criteria are as follows. And we have some additional testimony that we can provide relative to fiscal impact and the utilities, as I mentioned, but let me just run through these quickly. The first is that the property in question is reasonably suited for the proposed uses and will not create an undue hazard or excessive expenditure of public funds to ensure that public health, safety, our health and safety are maintained throughout and following development of the parcel. The property in question is reasonably suited for the proposed mixed-use development. It was previously approved for a more intensely-developed mixed-use development. There are, there is adequate, it's located on a major arterial road with excellent access to regional transportation. There is more than adequate capacity in the adjacent intersections to accommodate this development as proposed. And it's similarly suited to, the site is similarly suited to the current proposal as it was to any of the previous proposals that came through this board. There's no undue hazard or excessive community cost created by this amendment to the project. The second criteria is that the applicant shall demonstrate to the satisfaction of the board that the development will generate a net fiscal, positive fiscal impact for the town. And Mr. Fugere is here, who prepared the fiscal impact study. He has amended it to follow along with our changes to the program. And simply stated, the project, when completed, will create a net positive impact of approximately $1,364,000 per year in current dollars. Same methodology that we used in previous approvals was used in preparing this amended analysis with updated municipal cost data. The third is that the proposed development shall include provisions satisfactory to the planning board, to ensure that current and future municipal service capacity for police, fire, public works, general government, recreation, school services, and facilities within the community will not be adversely affected by the development. This kind of development, both the residential component and the non-residential component, has less overall demand on school services, for example, than traditional, single-family or even multifamily, like townhouse-type development. We have also included in the fiscal impact study costs for providing the other services from the town that might be required. As I mentioned earlier, the sanitary system is more than adequate to accommodate flows from the development. There, I think that what we had heard, and Dave can talk about this, was that the plant is currently at 40%, has 40% of their capacity available. So it becomes a matter of dealing with the technical ability of getting sewer sewage through the pipes, and that's something that we would reserve for a more thorough study once we have the conditional use permit in place. Water use is projected to be within the allocation previously reserved for the overall property and project. Police and fire departments will not experience significantly greater demand than would otherwise be experienced from by right development of the property, or from development of the, certainly of the previously approved CUP. So, and then the proposed mixed use, the next criteria is that the proposed mixed-use development shall not create an undue hazard or nuisance for vehicular or pedestrian traffic, shall include adequate provisions for safe and efficient traffic access and circulation and parking, and shall promote pedestrian and public transportation linkages within and between sites to the maximum practical extent. The revised traffic impact assessment that was done by VHB reflects the amended development program. It has been reviewed by the town's consultant, and they concur with the findings of that memorandum, that it represents a reasonably significant reduction in peak hour trips from the previously proposed plan. In addition, we use the same shared parking analysis that we've used throughout this process, using the same methodology that was used in previous plans, and it reveals that the amended development program equates to a parking demand for 883 spaces. Proposed plan provides 898 spaces, satisfying the peak parking demand. I should note that that methodology includes a specific reservation of parking spaces, in other words, not shared to the residential component of the project. The next criteria is that adequate and appropriate public infrastructure shall be provided to ensure proper operation of the proposed mixed uses. As I've mentioned, adequate utility and roadway capacity exists, to the degree that we have any impacts to public infrastructure off-site, or onsite, for that matter. The developer has agreed to make improvements to that infrastructure at his expense, and not the town's expense. And to the degree that any improvements that haven't been foreseen to date are required, then those are on the table for the developer as well. The proposed development must comply with all federal, state, and applicable federal, state, and local environmental laws, including all appropriate sections of the town zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations. We believe that the project complies with all applicable town, state, and federal environmental laws and regulations. Variances have created compliance with the town's zoning with respect to this application. The next criteria is that adequate buffers satisfactory to the planning board shall be provided along the development parcels' perimeter or boundaries, and along proposed boundaries of parcels interior to the mixed-use development. Buffers and landscaping shall reflect the need for appropriate separation and transitions between adjoining industrial, commercial, and residential uses. Well, the long and the short of it is that we are maintaining all of the buffer, all of the buffers that were included in previous approvals. We are, and not for nothing, the issue of buffers between uses in the mixed-use development kind of speaks against integration, but that's, so we're not proposing any specific buffers, although we think we have adequate buffering open space and pedestrian space to accommodate residents and visitors to the, and customers to the development. The next criteria is that the proposed development plan shall provide for continuity of open space throughout the development. Open space in other recreational areas within the development shall be related to projected town plans for such improvements, and should not be limited to trails and paths, although these are desirable features of the design. As I indicated earlier, there's a significant reservation of open space specifically for the use of residents and their visitors as an amenity to the development. And we are also maintaining the previously approved connections off-site. So there are a number of trails that go through, or pathways that go through the site and around the site, and those are being carried forward from the previous approval. And as I said, we have increased the amount of open space available in the Phase 2 area of the development by 25% over the previous application. So in summary, we believe that site is reasonably suited for the intended use. There is a positive fiscal impact that will build out. The project does not burden municipal service capacity, and utility utilization is within the allocation previously reserved. This reduces peak hour impacts from previously approved plans for traffic. Buffers and setbacks are maintained from previously approved plans. Proposed building height has been reduced, and commitments have been made to reduce lighting and noise impacts to the adjacent properties. Sidewalks and other public pedestrian, open space accommodations have been continued from previously approved plans. Significant open space amenity is provided for residents. No unreasonable impact or nuisance is being created to adjacent residential uses. It complies with all the local, state, and federal environmental laws. It complies with your zoning ordinance, we believe. It conforms, or will conform, with your architectural design criteria and your general design criteria as required by the ordinance. And the site plan process and execution of a development agreement will ensure compliance with any conditions that you choose to impose. That would be the end of my portion of the project.
If anyone has any questions of Gordon and his presentation, he'll be right here. I just wanted to get through our presentation first, Mr. Chair. I have two other people to provide testimony and then I'll conclude and then all of us will be available.
Does anyone have questions specifically related to Gordon's presentation about the design?
I have one question. Excuse me. So on the, on the second apartment building where the open space is, which is a large open space, that's where the parking was before?
Yes.
So now where's the parking?
Well, we reduced the number of units, so we have less demand for parking.
It looked like a lot of parking there before.
It was about thirty or forty parking spaces more than is shown on this plan.
Okay.
I can tell you. Yeah, we, we also have, there is podium parking or parking underneath that building as is in the phase.
Is there an increase of parking anywhere or where you took out thirty-six or whatever it was? It just looked like there was a lot of parking there and now there's a lot of green space. Just wondering if there's a...
Yeah, I, I don't know what the number was. I think it was, my recollection, and I could be off by a few, was it was, it was maybe a hundred and fourteen spaces and we're showing seventy-four now.
Okay.
So we reduced the number, the unit count by thirty, so that's where those spaces came from.
Okay.
We eliminated them.
Less apartments means they need less, less parking theoretically.
Correct.
Thank you.
Other questions specifically related to the design? We'll have full discussion of every other aspect at a right appropriate time. I just want to make sure we understand what Gordon gave us. Go for it and proceed.
And Mr. Chair, members, I apologize. I think I said forty units. I misspoke. Was thirty units or reduced? There were enough, not forty, thirty.
Thirty. Is your microphone on? I don't know if you, yeah, it's bright light when it's on.
I said thirty, I said forty before. It should be thirty units. Gordon corrected me though. With that, I'd like to call Dave Fenstermacher. There were some questions about sewer and water and he would like to sort of give an update of his most recent conversations and also be available to answer questions should anyone have about sewer and water capacity.
Excellent. Please.
Good evening. Dave Fenstermacher from VHB, the civil engineer on the project. Gordon did allude to it on his, during his presentation, but there was an allocation related to water for the original approval for the Merrimack Premium Outlets, which did include this parcel. And so what we had done was in working with the, the water department is provided calculations of what that allocation was, was, which was a hundred and thirty-seven thousand gallons per day. And then look at what's being used now at MPO and the Moes area and then what was used for phase one and looked at what the balance was, provided those calculations, provided the calculations of what phase two would present, would represent. And that number was below what was still available. So if there was fifty thousand gallons per day still available in capacity under that original agreement, this requires around thirty-seven thousand. So, which would still be well below the available amount. So we worked with the water district. They did provide a letter, which I was able to send to Tim yesterday. And it's basically in a concurrence with what we were saying before, but the, sort of the highlight of their conclusion was for the purposes of the conditional use permit request to the town of Merrimack, Merrimack Village District declares that water service for additional domestic use and fire protection is available to the site based on the flow calculations listed in the original agreement. And as Gordon noted, the follow-up is the full engineering study will be completed before the site plan application process. So as we get into our engineering design and putting our bends in and risers and hydrants and looking at the water pressure, those are all engineering pieces that we'll look at during the, the site plan process. And it was sort of a similar approach for the sewer. We reached out to the sewer department. We talked to them back in January. They had talked to us about, you know, the treatment plan operates at about forty percent right now, so capacity at the treatment facility isn't an issue. He did note that they had some concerns with the line for conveyance in Continental Boulevard, whether it's the, the size of the pipe is appropriate for the project. And the, we've asked them, they, they said they have set regulations or requirements for testing that we, we would do as part of the site plan approval. They're going to forward us that information. It could be, you know, putting in a flow meter or just checking some different capacities. But again, that's things that we could work out the engineering details of when we get our full design, you know, with, with inverts and locations and connection points as part of our project where we could appropriately analyze that stretch. So sort of just in summary, from a capacity standpoint, we're good. And then just further studies from the engineering, which we would advance as part of the site plan approval is just what's going to be left over to do.
Thank you for the presentation on that. If your testing as a result of the site plan reveals that the pipe in Continental Boulevard isn't big enough, what will you do?
That's one of those things that, you know, there could be potential to upsize the pipe if needed. So it would, it would need to be, we would have to mitigate through some sort of improvements offsite.
Okay. So some engineering solution for that satisfactory to the sewer department?
Correct.
That supplied the amount of capacity you needed?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah. There's, there's different solutions, but I'll just say, yeah, the intent is not to just to say, oh, there's not capacity and connect. It will, we'll, we'll work with the department or the district to come up with viable solution. And it could include pumping past that twelve inch that they think might be undersized or upsizing a portion of it.
Okay. Yeah, understood. I didn't want to lock you into one particular type of solution, but that there is an engineering solution.
There's an engineering solution.
If it is. Nelson?
Question, Mr. Chairman. Have, in determining the allocation of water, this is the water supply side now, to the Merrimack Premium Outlets, have you still accounted for the unbuilt portion of the Merrimack Premium Outlets? There's a section that has never been built.
Yeah, as part of this, we did not. We were just looking at the current allocation.
Okay. It seems to me you should continue to reserve, if you will, that capacity for their growth because they're still approved for growth up there.
Yeah. So what we're looking at as the, we have all their water records from the existing MPO as it operates today. That's around seventeen thousand gallons per day. We still have an allocation of like twelve to thirteen thousand available, so we'll double check to see what we're looking at in terms of the phase two, but I, I will say the calculations that we had didn't take into account the phase two as it has.
But it seems like there's probably room.
There's probably room.
Phase two is small.
Phase two is small, yeah.
Comments or questions otherwise? Okay. Thank you for that. You have one more?
Yes. Mark Fugere, there was a, excuse me. There were some questions raised by both Tim and his memo and then previously by Nelson in a letter. And Mark attempted to address them both separately. And then I think there was some last minute questions, and so I just think it'd be good to have Mark present so the board isn't sifting through all the letters, wondering what was answered, what was not. But Mark is here to answer any questions as well about fiscal impact.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Mark Fugere, Fugere Playing Development. I wrote the fiscal impact report, most recently dated April eleventh, and the two previous reports that were submitted and reflect the, the program that's in front of you this evening. And along with a letter sent to you relative to Mr. Disco's comments, which I hope addressed his questions. The most recent comments from Tim had to do with summarizing the, the findings in the 2016 report with today. And just to summarize those, 2016 projected revenues totaled just over a million dollars. And with cost, had a positive fiscal impact of six hundred thousand. With the updated program, we're projecting 1.972 dollars and a cost of six hundred thousand and a positive fiscal impact of 1,364. Tim wanted to see that at the end as a summary, and that's the major change that occurred in addition to trying to address some of the questions that Mr. Disco had, and I submitted a letter to you, trying to address each one of those that were raised. We didn't agree with, with all the comments, but we tried to explain our rationale and why we came up with them. The most recent memo that we saw today from Tim raised some issues about the, the school aid children multipliers that were used. I used local data from two new apartment complexes in town, which showed a very small number of children being projected of, of nine, based on Executive Drive and Gilbert Crossing. Tim wanted to use data from New Hampshire Housing. I will point out that that data is some ten years old plus, and New Hampshire Housing actually just signed a contract with a new group that's taking another look at those numbers. I can certainly update the report to reflect those new numbers. The children would increase, using those numbers to approximately twenty-two. I still don't think that's a significant change or will significantly change the cost factors, even if you double the, the school cost, we're still fiscally positive. I will note also that the town has lost over three hundred children in the school system since 2019. So certainly any children that come out of these new apartment building are going to be replacing seats that are currently vacant, and we don't think that's going to make a demonstrative change in the findings. I'd be happy to answer any questions that any of the members have related to that.
Questions on the financial analysis? Nelson?
I just didn't have the chance to go through details of Mark's answer to my questions, but I appreciate the fact that he took the time to try and
You're welcome.
address it. And I, I just can't answer whether, whether I'm satisfied or not. They didn't get the stuff until Sunday.
Understood. Which were the two apartment complexes in town that you used as references?
Executive Drive, which is near the movie theater.
Eleven.
And then Gilbert Crossing, Flatley's Project.
How does your development compare to theirs in terms of the number of two-bedroom units or three-bedroom units?
Neither one have three beds and ours doesn't. This proposal does not have three-bedroom units, which would, would make a difference.
Yep. Do you have a, a equivalent number of two-bedroom units or one-bedroom units?
I, I believe I have that back in my office, but I don't think I have that, but I can certainly provide that if you'd like.
What's your mix of two and three bedrooms?
Our mix is...
One and two bedrooms, I'm sorry.
Sixty-eight one beds and one-ten two beds. I mean, it's, it's, this is, this, these low numbers that you're seeing here is not unusual to the town of Merrimack. It's happening over, I do these reports all over New Hampshire and Massachusetts. Apartments just don't generate the number of kids that people think they do. And I, in the memo I sent to Mr. Disco, I, I also pointed out the Flatley Project at exit one has over five hundred units with thirty-five children in it, which is similar to the ratio you have here with the two new developments. So it's not anything unusual. I can certainly amend it to reflect Tim's comment, but I still don't make, believe it makes demonstrative impact on the community.
The difference in the, the two projections is nine children for the smaller estimate and twenty?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two total or twenty-two more than nine?
No, it's twenty-two total.
Okay.
If, Tim recommended using a ratio of point one seven for the two-bedroom units and a point oh four six for the one beds.
Okay. So thirteen more kids under one analysis, but still fiscally positive under either one?
Absolutely.
On yours, okay. Other comments or questions about the financial analysis, fiscal analysis, I'm sorry.
With, with regards to the kids, we've been watching this for, for many years as far as all these apartments that have been going up, and I believe your numbers are correct. They're not getting the number of children that people thought they might be. The other thing that goes into that equation is certainly the price of your apartments is not conducive to getting people with lots of kids.
Yeah, I think the higher, more, more luxury end apartments will end up with more.
I think also, you know, mixed use developments are a relatively new land use trend, and I don't have a ton of data, but what I'm starting to see is that if you have a residential development that's off by itself, multifamily, in more of a residential area, you're going to have more families than in a mixed use development. Makes, you know, the two developments that I cited, Executive Drive is a mixed use corridor. It's while office space and, and the movie theater. Certainly the Flatley development's the same, and this obviously will be the same. It's going to be a lot of single people, young adults and retirees are more attractive to a, and more urban-like development, but that's what the trend is right now.
Bearing in mind, well, I guess this is not necessarily a financial question, so I'll save it for others.
Okay.
So thanks. Other comments? Nelson?
Just one more question. Mr. Fugere, you, you referred to a memo that you had written in response to my letter?
Yes.
I don't think I've seen that.
You didn't get that letter?
It dated April eleventh. It was submitted to the planning board.
Chair.
Is that?
People, that's this.
No.
It was a two-page letter. Would you like to have it?
I don't believe I...
Robert, do you have it? I don't think I see it in my packet either.
No, I'm not. It's addressed to the chair and went down to each one of your points, Nelson, so...
I didn't see it.
Okay. Well, I did do it. I'd be happy to...
Well, everybody ought, everyone ought to see, everyone ought to have it, so.
Pardon me?
Oh, yeah, it's after April eleventh. Fiscal study, it's the page after. The page after the fiscal study?
Oh, do you have it?
It is there. Yeah, thank you.
I have one February fourth.
Oh, it's page two of the, of the report.
I got you. Okay.
You have it, Nelson?
I do.
It's got my letterhead on it and it's, it's addressed to the chairman.
Oh, no, I don't have it yet. Sorry, this is, this is not it.
After that, there was a few pages of materials included in the packet, separate from what's stapled together.
Yeah.
The whole stapled package set aside and look what's after that.
It wouldn't be Tiger and Bonds. No.
It is here.
Yeah, I found mine in...
Yes. Okay. All right, we, we rescued it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Let's, let's take a moment though and look it over if you hadn't seen it yet, because if they were your questions, Nelson.
Yeah, I know.
Let's make sure you thought through them.
I don't know if I can take up the time of this meeting to do that, but I'll, I'll give it a whack, but continue with the meeting.
Any other testimony that you'd like to give?
No, I just, I guess I'd like to conclude with a summary, Mr. Chair.
Please do.
Thank you. As everyone knows, you reviewed Tim's memo and now you've heard the testimony, which was in response to Tim's memo, and I believe you've received the latest responsive documents, including what Dave presented tonight, the changes to the plan that were made in response to Tim's first memo. And I think it's fair to say, I'm not over-exaggerating, but I think we've covered every issue of the CUP ordinance. We're down to Tim's two objections, which I stated upfront that we disagree with, and one is the purpose, that we do in fact meet the purpose, and I think we've made a case that we meet the purpose. And the second, perhaps most importantly, is the issue of density. And the real problem, as I see it, is a variance was granted, and that is what defines what density is allowed out there. And then you folks have the hard task of deciding whether that density can fit on the site and meet the criteria of the CUP. So that's why we ran through each of the criteria with the proposed one hundred and seventy-eight units as shown. And we were a bit disappointed because we thought we made a major leap here and got the same reaction from staff that it isn't enough or it's a minor reduction. But we think we've heard you, listened to you, tried to give up more open space, tried to deal with adding as much commercial as possible without adding more parking spaces to the site and taking away open space. But I think that's the hard decision you all have to make. I think I remind you that if you choose to deny the application as recommended, and I was a bit surprised that there wasn't an option to approve, just one option in there to deny, we would ask you to consider approval, even though it's not recommended. But if you deny it as recommended because of density, that is a proposed density which falls under the density allowed by the variance, it must be for one of the criteria established under under the CUP ordinance. And while I am reluctant to do so, and I rarely do so before planning boards, I have to make a comment about the legal status of this issue. There's a recent case, appeal of Town of Amherst decided by the Supreme Court of New Hampshire on January 18th, 2023, which turned on, among other issues, the lack of definition to the word rural. What happened was the Town of Amherst made a CUP approval, then it got the site plan, and they decided that they didn't like the density after all because it didn't, wasn't in keeping with the word rural. This case went to the Housing Appeals Board, and the Housing Appeals Board determined that the decision of, that the application does not protect and preserve the rural aesthetics that the town is consistently valued, was an incorrect conclusion. Any detailed analysis is hampered by the fact that there is no expressed definition of rural. Clearly, it can mean different things to different people. I'm reading from the case. However, there must be objective criteria, not random opinions, for an applicant to follow in order to comply. A municipal ordinance must be framed in terms sufficiently clear, definitive, and certain so an average person after reading it will understand it, understand if one is violating the provisions. As I say, in Amherst, they'd granted a permit to allow up to 54 units. When it came to the site plan, they determined it was too intense, but they didn't establish what criteria made it too intense. I would urge you to be careful about denying it on the basis of a purpose. There is nothing in the purpose that talks about density. So we are unable to determine what exactly the objection is under whether this plan meets the purpose or not. Purpose can be a slippery slope, and when there is no definition that talks about density, let alone a definition of density, there's an issue. Also, there's no definition of mixed use in your ordinance, so we don't really know what makes a mixed use good or bad. It's sort of like what makes it rural or not rural. The density, while not defined in your ordinance, is listed in Section 15, but as I said, that limitation was superseded by the variance, which said, yes, you're restricted to seven to eight units per acre, but now with the variance, you can have up to 208. It just doesn't, maybe doesn't fit under the CUP, but you have that right to try for Finally, the criteria that you have to decide is, under what criteria of the CUP can the board determine whether 50, 100, 178, or 208 units is appropriate? As I said, it becomes a guessing game. We don't want to come back here and say, well, you didn't like 178, maybe you like 125. We have no leadership or clue, but we do know what we proposed addressed your comments. Reduce the density, give us more open space, reduce the height so the impact to the neighbors isn't as great, don't have the balconies showing on the other side so that they go towards the neighbors. We have addressed those concerns. We have addressed every one of Tim's points except for he doesn't like the 178 units. The decision should not be whether this is dramatically different from what's approved and what's there, but does it meet the criteria of your ordinance? And we believe it does. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Morgan. Let me, I'd like to lead the board through a discussion that is somehow organized and focused, so we don't just jump all over the place on different issues. And as I see Tim's memo and your presentation, the conflicts seem to focus on two parts. One is this notion in Tim's analysis of density as a numerical value, as a dimensional matter, and it being sort of higher than our ordinary dimensional analysis, but sort of as a separate concept or a separate analysis outside of the CUP standards. And your view is that that analysis shouldn't exist outside of the CUP analysis, and even if it did, density isn't a dimensional standard, it's legally separate as a concept in our regulations. I have that, am I all right so far?
I think you've summarized my argument, that's correct.
Okay.
And I supported that with, as I say, two arguments. One is the Outlet Village Shops ordinance specifically says, following the density, dimensional, and parking requirement. So your own ordinance differentiates. And number two, even within the ordinance itself, it uses the word dimensional, and definitions of dimensional are significantly different than definitions of density.
Okay.
So I respect that he went down that path because there was an open door he could go through, but I respectfully disagree that he had the right to go down that path. That is my argument, that, that it is covered by a variance and you have to stay within the CUP. Now that the, now that the density, the allowed density is set by variance, you have a right to examine it under the conditions of the CUP, but not under, not under the conditions of the PUD or under any other zoning regulation. That is my position.
Okay. Now, the variance itself says up to, whatever the number they said, 208, and up to obviously could be something less than that, and your view is that if we arrived at something less than that, it would have to be because we looked into our CUP regulations, our 11 criteria, and said, based on criteria three, or six, or nine, there's some reason to say you got to have less apartments in here, and the number should be 198 or something, and that's the only way that we would arrive at something under 208 is by using the CUP regulation. That's your view of the analysis as well, or?
Somewhat, that I think you have to apply that analysis to what's presented, 178. We're moving...
Yeah, I'm sorry, 178.
We have a right to 208, but we're presenting 178.
Yeah, that's right.
So yes, your analysis is correct.
And then any other vote up or down is, on the entire application, is simply a matter of going through those 11 criteria in our CUP and saying, number one, asks this thing, do they achieve it, do they not? Number two, asks what it asks, and do they achieve it and do they not? Is that right?
That's correct. With the addition that, as Tim points out, you know, it's not just, it's not the criteria, but it is the master site development plan, which, as I say, he covered all those points, and I think, other than the density, we are, we are in compliance. He agrees we met all those criteria. So I think you have to consider those as part of your approval process or denial process, but I think we've satisfied staff that we've met those conditions.
A number of them, I think the staff confirms with you that they're met, and a few of them remain connected to the density or the purpose or that question about those things, and let the board debate those and see where they land. Okay. Thank you for helping me understand exactly the way the two arguments collide. Board members, if it's okay with you, I would like to kind of take it bit by bit and first deal with this density discussion and then get into the CUP criteria and just talk it through for each of them. Is that okay if we do that? I think that the discussion about density is sort of twofold. The numerical discussion about density that Tim lays out with 41 units per acre and comparing it to the PUD and all of that, you arrive at analysis where density is sort of just reduced to a number, and if the number is within a scale that you like, then maybe that passes some scrutiny or not. I think Attorney Hollis's analysis of whether density is a part of dimensions is correct. His analysis is what it is. When an ordinance has a topic called density and a topic called dimensions, they're separate things, and you should treat them separately.
Chair, I was just reminded, the public hearing hasn't been held.
Right, we haven't asked for any public testimony, and I think we'll get to that a little bit later in our discussion. So that doesn't mean that we can't take a look at the number of apartment units and decide whether it fits within our CUP criteria or there's any other reason to discuss it, but whether it is a dimensional characteristic under that piece of the regulation or whether it is something else, I think it's, the legal analysis, it really isn't in any doubt. I mean, that's one of a very primary organizational rule for interpreting a statute. When there's two different things addressed, you don't, you can't scramble them together. Now that, separate from that, I think the real issue here is, how does this site function? More than what the number is. A number is a number. Density is 17-point-something per acre, or 15.5 or 41.2. Does it function? And have a debate and discuss that piece of it. The variance, I think, is an interesting piece of the puzzle. As it relates to density, they do have a variance to allow up to 208, and in some way or another, there's, that has to have some legal effect, right? It does something. And so what exactly does it do in terms of the number or the statistics or whatever? If we say that we have this variance, but we're going to use a dimensional analysis to say it's still just too high a number, in some way, I think you're not giving effect to the variance. I mean, it is what it is. Doesn't mean that you can't look at the CUP again and look at the site and say it's overcrowded or there's not enough open space, or there's not enough parking, or there's not enough room for kids to play, or whatever you want to talk about in terms of the number of apartments. But I think that our focus really should be in the CUP criteria rather than this discussion about density as a pure number. With that in mind, this is not the world according to Bob. This is a seven-member board. Let's hear what you guys think and whether you agree or disagree or think that neither, that's not even relevant whether you agree or disagree. I'll open up the floor. Who wants to comment? Brian?
Here's where I am in my understanding and how I think of this, as far as quality of living, et cetera. Sorry, I sound a little hoarse. With the new changes, you'll have a total of 402 units on 13.167 acres of land. Okay, so that calculates to being 30.53 dwellings per acre. Now, my property is an acre, and I have a single-family home of some 1,900 square feet. If I imagine my acre of land and putting on 30 and a half dwellings on that acre, it begins to get a little crowded. And then if I think about, okay, so maybe that's up with 60 people, and those 60 people have maybe two cars each that have to be parked within that acre with the 30 units, 30 and a half units or so, that seems really crowded to me. And now I've got to think about, well, how do all those cars get in and out of that acre? See what I'm saying? It's just, yeah, I can't ignore the density because there is no quality of life when you've smashed all those cars and all those people on one acre of land.
Thank you, Barbara.
I could be wrong with that thought process, but that's kind of how I simplify it for my, for my brain.
I think you've talked, when you talk about quality of life, now you're correctly, I think, in the CUP criteria and deciding, how does the site work? In terms of, you know, just as a dimensional number and saying they don't meet a dimensional number and therefore they're blocked, I think that's the difference. But again, any other comments? I know if you guys were aiming to make comments, and I don't mean not look this way for a second.
So, you know, I've, I've been regretting this coming up here, because the reason I joined the planning board was I've sat where you guys are sitting at other towns. You know, I wish we were able to give that clear guidance that said, you know, 200 or 150 or 100 units was where we draw the line. At previous meetings, we had discussed there was no definition of mixed use, and that's something that, you know, has come up in other meetings as a, an action item possibly moving forward. I think this is a, it's a dense project, but there's nothing inherently wrong with that. You know, people live in New York City, and people live in the middle of Montana, and it's, you know, if you choose to live where you choose to live, and that's kind of how I take it. I truly appreciate that you guys have taken into account all the feedback that we've given you definitively, and I hope that the abutters and are like that this has gone from 208 units down to where it is today. But yeah, that's, that's kind of my, my two cents there.
Good, Brian. Comments over here on the density question? Lynn?
I don't have as much problem with the density as I do with some of the other things, and I do appreciate the fact that you did listen to us and reduce the numbers, increase the open space, drop the building height, got rid of the balconies. I appreciate the fact that you've done that. But I go back to the one comment that was made at the last time by the chairman that said, if you came to us from the get-go with this proposal, would we approve it? When you came to us originally with 200 unit apartments, 42,000 square feet, or 93,000 square feet of office, specialty retail, 16,000 restaurant, hotel, and now you've gotten to where you are, this isn't what I think of as mixed use. You've scrunched up all the things that make it mixed use and just expanded the residential. I don't know, it could, could the, could that new building be put on the east side of the property instead of the north side so that you're not butting up against Spruce Street? I don't know. I know it would take some engineering to see if you could do that, but I just feel like, I was excited about this project when you first came. I thought it was a great use for this property. I loved having a large hotel with an event space here. We don't have event space in this town. We need it. Those were all things that were good. I thought it was a great proposal, and I was strictly in favor of it. But as we've gone along, that proposal has changed and changed and changed again, and it's gotten to the point where, don't really consider this mixed use. I consider this a residential development with a few little buildings outlining. And I know this, this definitions and everything else, this is just my feeling. And like I said, I really was excited about this. I thought this was a great project going forward, and I understand the change in the market, that's, that's going to happen. What's going to happen in two years? Will we get back to that? I don't know. I have no way of telling, and I know that's a difference. As far as the apartments themselves and the fact that we need more residential apartments, we do, but not at over $2,000 a month. That's not what we need. We need workforce housing. We need something in the 800 to 1,200 to 1,400 range, not 2,400. That's my two cents.
Nelson, you had a hand up for comment.
Well, yes, some of it, without being repetitive, I want to say that when we started with this whole concept of mixed-use development, and we changed the zoning and so on, I had picture, I think a lot of the people who voted for it did have this picture of a true mixed use, a semi-walkable community where services are provided from one section of the community to another, and it's self-contained to a large extent. This has evolved away from that, and as we originally approved it, I think that's what we were looking at. I think that's what Lynn meant when she said, it looked like a nice kind of development, a new kind of development for Merrimack, a kind of development that would be self-contained and, and provide amenities and services for people who want to live, play, and work here, because we had large office space, too. So we've gotten away from that, and that kind of bothers me. I'm not saying there's something wrong with this, it's just completely different than what we had started out with and what we had tried to achieve with this kind of, this kind of zoning. We went and changed the zoning to accommodate these things. So that troubles me about where we're going, where we've gone with this now. I guess I'll leave it there for now, and let's hear from others. I guess I'll leave it there for now and let's hear from others. Thank you. Green.
Thank you. That kind of what everybody else said, too. I think you really did go ahead and listen to a lot of what we had asked for before. But I think the big thing that's missing, and and I think it's it's the vision. And I I I kind of when I hear that you you're not sure what we're looking for, I feel like there was a lot of information given in regards to the different properties. Brian was talking about more, you have all these people, there's no restaurants there, people need a place to eat. And, you know, I'm looking at numbers because I'm a numbers girl. And but don't quote me, don't grade me on these numbers. But on your your table two, phase one program changes, so approved in 2016 was about 130,000 square feet of office space, special retail, restaurants, event center. Now we're looking at 15,400. That's a that's a vision right there. That is a lot. And I I think that's what we're we're looking for here. We've gone from, and I remember just like I think I wasn't on the planning board there, but I remember the look of it in my head of seeing people coming and going. I think I've said this before. I'm originally from Burlington, Mass. I see it down there on that third Ave. I mean, it's very, it's bustling all the time down there. We don't have restaurants here to feed the people that are already here. There's wait, so there's only like five restaurants. You know, nice restaurants to go out to. So I I think that we have expressed that. Again, the amenities that there's stores there, there's, you know, a barber shop, something. But I I feel like it's just gone to all apartments. But and I do want to comment on, I think it was Lynn that had said, but we do need workforce. And and there was a discussion in regards to, you know, the people could work right up there at the mall. And we know that the people up at the mall couldn't afford to live in these apartments. So could this be workforce housing instead of high-end housing is my thought. And my other thought, I go back to two is, and I and I pictured this in my head, the the one at exit one in Nashua or the Royal, whatever it is. Yeah, I mean, I remember they were they were made a long, long time ago, probably for people at digital or or whatever. And now they're not. Now they've kind of gone the wayside. Now there's a lot of police calls there and stuff like that. So they started out high-end and now they're not. So looking, you know, as a vision down the road right now, you may have people, but if people are working from home, why are they going to be working? You know, in a in here if there's, they could work anywhere within the the businesses around here. So those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Anybody could skip Barbara?
Can I just ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
Did one of you say that the zoning board had already answered the question of the density and approved it? When you were last there?
Yes.
Because, okay, so that's what you did say.
Yeah.
Because my understanding was they didn't approve the density. They didn't even comment on it. They just allowed you the extension in order to be able to pursue the additional work with the cup with us.
You're correct in that the last visit to the zoning board was strictly to extend. There was no discussion about the original approval. The original approval is maintained.
Okay.
So there was no discussion at the last zoning board.
Yeah, so but the earlier meeting gave you the variance for the density.
That's correct. That was a variance from the limitation imposed by
based on that presentation.
Yes. Based upon the presentation the second time around. In other words, there was an original variance in 2015 and then there was a subsequent variance for the 208 units. And at that time, the presentation was, we need to swap out the commercial space for the residential. I didn't present it, but I've read the minutes and that's what was presented. They granted the variance knowing that this schematic or some version of this schematic would be presented to the planning board. But it left it up to the planning board to decide if those 208 units or some other number under 208 met the CUP requirements.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. So I think everybody remember the planning board has weighed in. I think, no, Helene, did you? Would you like to?
I'm just going to echo what everyone said. I did agree, I do agree with everyone else on the planning board. It's especially Lynn where the initial vision has changed a lot since then. It's that bothers me because I was excited for it. Very much so. And what Barbara had also mentioned that, you know, I also live on an acre and that's a lot of people in a small space. I don't know if it's something I would want to live in that tight. That's all.
Okay. So beginning the discussion, we're talking about this idea of density as a number and the way that it's analyzed in the staff memo. Everybody having commented on it, nobody seems to want to talk or 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 raise concerns about purely 30-point something per acre or whatever. It's really about the character of the development and the vision. And I think master plan is probably the count, the 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 words that our CUP statute uses to talk about the things that we're talking about. And so it seems like that's where we want to focus is what the CUP requirements are and
Definitely, but I think it's still an issue when you're stuffing all of that into one acre.
Oh, yeah, no question in terms of how does it function? And is there enough space for everybody and all of that? Those are typical garden variety CUP issues to discuss. But sort of drawing a line in the sand and saying 30 per acre is is a is a number and we number needs to be a different number. Morgan, are you?
I I just had two very brief comments to what the board raised. One, well, I understand what Ms. Healy said and others did about putting too much on one acre. I think you have to realize you your house may be on an acre, but there's a backyard there of part of that acre and there's a backyard here. And so if you're going to compare apples to apples, you can't just say the footprint of the building is on one acre. You have to say the footprint of the building includes all the space around it. And so you have to weigh in. Yes, it's it's crowded. There's no question about it. But it is not all jammed on. It's not like there's nothing else around it. There's one acre and then the mall abuts it. No, there's one acre and then there's land around. And so you have to visualize that you live in an apartment and it doesn't matter where that apartment is. The rest of the acreage around it is sort of the area where those who want to go outside, go outside. Those who don't want to go outside and that's why they live in an apartment, maybe they are inside. But I think it would be inappropriate to leave the comment that, oh, all of this is on one acre and I live on one acre. Well, you've considered on your acre your backyard. Therefore, you must consider the backyard here in that thought process. And I think the only other comment I had is we've said it before, we're disappointed. We're disappointed, we can't build what was presented, but we can't. And so we have kind of moved forward. What can we build and how does it fit within the requirements? And, well, we would love to be able to say, well, what you saw, we're only varying a little bit. We're only coming in with a slightly different plan. That's just not true. It is a very different plan. But your job is you can you can be disappointed. But you have to decide, does it meet the criteria? I don't think the decision is, would we have passed this if this came in the first time? I don't think that's a fair analysis because you don't know. What you saw was pretty nice. What we presented, what my client presented was pretty nice. But this may not be as nice, but it's still pretty nice. And it's very hard to throw away what you've seen before and start fresh. But I really think that's what you have to do. And I think that's what the chair has said as well. We have to analyze, does this, does this proposal fit on this site? Does it work? Does the traffic work? Does the infrastructure work? Is there a place for people to go? It's not as exciting. It's not as glitz and glamour as what you first saw. It's not what my client wanted to build. But this is what he can build. This is what he's proposing. And so we we appreciate all the feedback and it may well be that it doesn't get decided tonight. And it may well be that we can look at something else based on other comments we hear from the public and from you. But I do want to put it in the proper perspective that everybody wishes they could build what they did. But you can also look to some of these mixed use developments that are not succeeding. And some of them are because they don't have enough residential development around. In fact, in Salem, they've determined there is no office demand, so we're not building offices at the Tuscan Village. We are building residences to support the retail. Because there's not enough residents to support all the retail we've got, we need to have more residents in lieu of commercial. And that's 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 just sort of the growth model of where mixed use is. Now Burlington works fine because there's a lot of people around Burlington. But not every place works. You can go, you can stop at Tuscan and see what's going on there. And then you can drive down to Linfield and see how much more commercial there is there and how much bigger a whole project it is. You can go to Newbury Street and see how that works. But on this site, I I would urge you to also consider where did this project come from? You've got the huge retail outlets up there. You've got Nextdoor, Fidelity. You've got this piece. Do they all really work together? Could you walk to Fidelity? Absolutely. Could you walk to the outlets? Absolutely. Could you live here and do, as you say, live, work, play? Absolutely. Just it's just too small a site to have a meaningful commercial place to work, live and play all at once. We think that this works under your mixed use. Unfortunately, there is no real definition of mixed use. That's a conundrum we all have, but we think it meets it.
Okay, thank you for the clarifications. Let me switch over to the criteria under the conditional use permit. There are 11 of them. And let me sort of skip through, give a highlight of each one and kind of highlight whether the staff or the applicant agree with each other. The first one is is certainly one where there's significant disagreement. And it deals with whether the property is reasonably suited for the proposed use and will not create undue hazards or expenditures of public funds. The applicant and the staff disagree about that one, mostly in terms of the the property being reasonably suited for the proposed uses. The second criteria deals with the financial analysis, the fiscal impact analysis. And the staff seems to agree with the applicant that their analysis satisfies our requirement. The third requirement is that the development includes the provision satisfactory to the planning board to ensure the current current and future municipal services capacity for police, fire, et cetera, will not be adversely impacted. The staff refers to the financial analysis answer. And so I assume that means the staff believes I criteria three is more or less satisfied. Number four is the proposed mixed use development shall not create undue hazard or nuisance or vehicular pedestrian traffic. This deals with the traffic study. The staff comments that the applicant submitted an updated traffic analysis, which the staff doesn't disagree with or peer review analyst doesn't disagree with. And so I marked that as one where the staff agrees with that the applicant has met that criteria. Number four, number five is one that deals with appropriate public infrastructure to provide the proper operation of proposed use. And the staff's reservation was they wanted to see a letter from the sewer and the water district. I think the applicant hasn't disagreed with the idea that a letter has to be produced. It's just a matter of timing and and, you know, we routinely do that with all of our site plans. So number five, I think I I mark as could be met, whether it actually is yet or not. There's no letter in hand, I guess, from the water.
And along those lines, actually, Tim wanted me to stress and I was kind of waiting for the appropriate time to say it. Since the criterion specifically requires that the planning board find that adequate service is available and the applicant only can show that capacity at the wastewater plant is available. But we do not know if the pipes can actually handle it. There's no way to really satisfy that criterion until they can finish the calculations through with the sewer department. That's staff's position.
So is that similar to some of these other ones where you're acknowledging that essentially those are met in site plan review? Or that there's no way for the board to make a decision on that criteria?
So in in speaking with Tim specifically on this one, there's no way to really make a decision until we get the full-on calculation that the pipes can handle it or have to be upgraded or we have to have resolution on that.
Okay, why is that different than some of the others where it's it's satisfied at the site plan review? Because there's three or four of yours where you've outlined that those criteria are determined at the site plan review.
Can't answer all, all I can tell you is just the the wording of that and what I've been guided to say to you.
Okay, I I'll let the board talk it through. Number six is the proposed development must comply with all federal, applicable federal, state and local environmental laws. And it says the applicant acknowledged the requirement for all development to comply with all applicable laws. Compliance with this criteria will be assessed at the time of any future site plans and the review. So I took that to mean that as for the purpose tonight, number six is satisfied. And again, I don't know why number five has a different rule, but so be it. Number seven, adequate buffers satisfactory to the planning board shall be provided. And the staff comment is the applicant appears to provide the required buffers as indicated by the normally applicable sections of the ordinance. And so number seven appears to be one where the staff thinks it is satisfied. Number eight is the open space question. I thought that the 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 staff kind of leaves that up to us to have a determination with the applicant about sufficient internal open space. My own personal focus was on the fact that the word continuity of open space appears in our regulation. And while there is some open space here, I don't know if we've thought or even talked about the connectedness of the open space. I think that at any rate, eight is one where the staff seems to ask us to review and consider that. But doesn't necessarily suggest that it's been met. Number nine is the proposed development must demonstrate compliance with the architectural design criteria set forth in the regulations. This is another one where the staff has indicated that the applicant's committed to doing that at site plan review. Number 10 is the proposed development will not result in unreasonable impacts to adjoining properties or uses by way of light, noise, pollution, visual blight, odor, vibration, et cetera. That's one where I know that we're going to hear it from the public that they don't agree that that's been met. But the staff's analysis suggests that it has been met. 11 is the proposed development addresses to the satisfaction of the planning board. The general design criteria in that section of our regulation is met. The staff acknowledges there's a lot of overlap between those two sections, but generally gives a thumbs up on 11, which to me means that there's really the focus on open space and the first criteria about the property being reasonably suited for that use. We don't necessarily have to agree that something is met because the staff said so. We could certainly look at it and say that it isn't, even though the staff gave it a relatively positive review. I think that the the focus between the staff and the applicant is really about those. Is the property suited for the proposed use? Will it create undue hazards or expenditures? And is there enough open space? Those still relate to the density, the number of apartments, because all of those things go into the equation for does the site work? Does it have enough open space? Does it, is it reasonably suited for that purpose? Let me just open the floor, let you guys comment. I don't want to rush you past any of the criteria. I was just trying to focus the discussion so we weren't talking about ones where the staff and the applicant have already sort of checked the box. Is that
That's good.
Any agreement or disagreement with having that approach?
So just for clarity there, it's the disagreement is on one, five potentially, eight and nine. Is that correct?
Eight and nine, yeah. I think that's what I had for and I think eight was one. Well, the the, I think the public is going to tell us about number 10 and their view of it. The staff's view is the mixed use of the mix of uses proposed by the applicant does not contain industrial uses and is unlikely to cause issues associated with pollution, blight, odor or vibration. Light and noise issues will be specifically examined at the time of site plan review of the individual uses. If the proposal went forward, town regulations will be applied to make sure certain illuminations or noise issues are appropriately addressed. So 10 is as to industrial uses, they have no issue with it. As to the commercial lighting and those sorts of things, the staff's comment is that site plan review is the place where that would occur. So whether we decide 10 is met or not. So whether we decide 10 is met or not, we'll hear it out. Before we dive into what we think of the ones where the staff doesn't agree, I think it's the appropriate time to hear from the public so that we're not having discussions or debate without having the benefit of hearing that first. Does that sound like the right approach, everyone?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for that. Thank you for yielding the table, and when everybody's ready. Thank you, Gordon. Let me open up the floor to any members of the public who wish to weigh in. Mike, it's good to see you again.
Michael, excuse me, Michael Mills, Seven Harbor Street, here in the town of Merrimack. Good evening, everybody. Everybody here this evening is getting to be like my best friends. We meet here every month or so to discuss the same proposal over again. I had an opportunity of going through my file, and I pulled out a Manchester Union Leader article that was dated January 19th, 2018, basically five years ago. It's really interesting. We talk about what was voted on by this board many years ago. You know, what was it that was going to happen out here at the site? And it's really quite interesting. There was going to be one building with 58 units, 58 apartments. There was going to be another building with 65 units, and a third building with 71. We're here today talking about one building already existing with approximately 200 units in it, and we're talking about, should we approve, should the town approve another building with another 178 units? Let's look at what was originally talked about in the site and see how this has really changed. It's not the same project. It's not what anybody really expected, and it certainly isn't what the neighborhood had expected. The changes are really just overwhelming. I've been taking notes during the presentation of each of the previous speakers. So my presentation isn't going to be quite as clear and concise as the past attorney spoke and the land engineer spoke, but several things that I want to make clear. First off, going back to one of the earlier planning board meetings, there was this discussion about when the cul-de-sac was going to be built to access the traffic coming into the apartment building. And my recollection of that vote was that it didn't have to be built right away, but as the units started to be occupied, there would have to be some cul-de-sac built for the cars to turn in. And I think everybody on this board voted saying that that's reasonable. Let's go ahead and vote on that. Well, people are moving in. I don't know what the occupancy rate is of the buildings, but people are moving in, and I have yet to see any work being done on the cul-de-sac. The same way I brought up the fact that even though I sit here at these meetings and I'm told that the hotel is under construction, there's no hotel under construction anywhere. There's no restaurant under construction anywhere. And I think it raises a credibility issue as to how much information being presented at these meetings naturally would be relied on in the future. January 19th, 2018, tear this up. That's not what we have now. Go to the next hearing. Different number, different plan. Nothing's the same. We see pictures of this beautiful area where you drive in, and I agree, it was a beautiful presentation. What happened to that? We're told that we have to change what was approved because the market has changed. Well, I think you cannot miss the point. We're here in Merrimack. We have offices going in. We have commercial space going in, and there's no reason why that had to have been deleted from this plan at any time. I'd like to bring to the board's attention a study, kind of fun that day, actually. I think some of the planning board members were present for that. Out there on Spruce Street, there was a balloon test done. What are the neighbors going to say if the building is 40 feet tall? And someone out there had a balloon, and they raised it up 40 feet? And the climate, they raised it up 50 feet, and the climate was, that's really high. That's going to be a problem here in the neighborhood. So they brought it down to 40 feet, and it was the same comment. We can't have a building 40 feet that's close to the residential neighborhood. The big thing that the neighborhood, and I can speak on behalf of several of the neighbors because I talk to them on a daily basis. I hope that these planning board members have driven down, as I have personally requested, down Continental Boulevard and looked at the lighting that is on that building. It glows in the dark, whether or without the balconies. You're going to still have light coming out from each of those apartments. You're talking about approving a building. Now, my measurements aren't going to be correct. I'm going to be a couple of feet off, so please understand that. But you're talking about a building that is 400 feet wide, 400 feet wide. No one's house here is 400 feet wide. Nobody's house here is 400 feet wide. You're talking about a building, and I couldn't hear the gentleman when he spoke, because it seems like when it's an issue that they don't want to make clear, they kind of mumble a little bit, I don't know what it was. But I think the building, if I understood correctly, was going to be 45 feet tall, but then the ends are going to be another 10 feet taller than that. So you're talking about a building anywhere from 45 to 55 feet tall. 400 feet wide, 45 feet tall, approximately 240 feet to the back door of the first abutter. 240 to 200 feet to the back door of the abutter. Now picture that. Picture your house. Picture your house. Everyone's house here. Picture my house. I can't imagine walking into my backyard and having a 45-foot building with people out there infringing on the privacy that I paid the town of Merrimack year after year to maintain. That is, that is not reducing the impact of that building on the neighborhood. I don't think it even makes a dent, to tell you the truth. When it's day, when it's time to vote, please picture this in your mind. That building, those lights, 45 feet tall, 250 feet, 240 to 250 feet to your back door. Is that correcting or not impacting the neighborhood? I walk out of my front door, and I look down Arbor Street, and the whole area is lit up. That whole area is lit up from that building, and that's nowhere near 240 feet from the back door of the other houses. It's nowhere near that. Please. If 40 feet was too high back then, many years ago, it's going to be too high today. I don't know what's acceptable. It's the wrong location to build an apartment building like that. The reason that's being proposed is that, I believe through error, perhaps I'm wrong, I've got 52 years in real estate. You can't take a property like that and subdivide it and call it condos. You own this piece of property, and what you're going to do with that piece of property should be restricted to that piece of property. You shouldn't be allowed to go and say, well, let's see, there's a climbing area over here, climbing area down there, climbing area down here, climbing area down there. If I add them all up, golly be, the density goes from 5,000 units to 1,000 units per acre. That's not the purpose of a condo development. If the project hadn't been developed, subdivided into condominiums, a lot of discussion wouldn't even be taking place, because this building could be moved to another location where it isn't infringing on the neighborhood. They could have put it closer to the road over there with the cul-de-sac, where the access road is to the outlet center, and a lot of the discussion that the neighborhood is bringing up would be irrelevant. It wouldn't be causing a problem to us. It can't be done today because they're condo units. He can't move that building someplace else. So for the owner to make any money, he has to say, okay, how do I justify this? Well, I'll take one floor off the building. You still have a massive, let me just stress that again, 400 feet wide, 45 feet tall, 240 feet from the back door of the adjacent houses. That doesn't work. It was presented that there's no threat to the neighborhood, to the town, to the abutters. Yes, there is. I've addressed that issue. There was discussion about water availability. It was brought up how the outlet center has a phase two, and has this development taken into consideration the water that's been allocated to phase two of the outlet center? And I believe, again, if I understood correctly, the answer was no, we didn't take that into consideration yet. Well, how can you keep coming to these meetings without knowing whether or not you have enough water? You can't take, I can't say, my neighbor's watering his yard, so I'm going to use his water on my one. It's his water. We're talking about taking the water from the outlet center and approving that use of that water to another project. That's a potential lawsuit against the town of Merrimack. I can't take your water, your water, anybody's water, and claim it's my water, and isn't that what's happening here? It is what's happening here. That evidence was already entered into there. When this project was first, when it was first approved, month after month, meeting after meeting, there was a lot of discussion about this is the place to live, work, and play. I just heard testimony that this is not a place to live, work, and play any longer. Isn't that what was approved? Isn't that what the town of Merrimack was really wanting this development to be? Now, our neighborhood as abutters cannot, we don't have a vote. We don't have a vote. I resent someone threatening the town of Merrimack that they're going to sue us. Let me be clear. If this planning board decides to take, that's not coming out the way I want it to come out. If the neighborhood is not protected, and if our lifestyle cannot be maintained after all these years, we have to take action to protect ourselves as well, and we're prepared to do that. We're prepared to do that. There's a lot of people in that neighborhood that are the original owners. Our street, Arbor Street, was supposed to originally continue, and that was supposed to be all residential housing. Times change. The property got sold off, and the use has changed, but it doesn't mean that what goes in there affects the lifestyle of other people. I don't think that I would be able to sit here in front of this board and say, we have a half-acre lot. I want to build a 25-unit building on it. You allow it next door. Why can't I do it? Because it's foolish. It's absolutely ridiculous. I'd be embarrassed to do that. There has to be some action where the developer says, we're not making it clear what we want. Let me be, I can't speak on behalf of all the abutters, but let me be clear that I don't want to walk out my front door and see the end of my street all lit up in a four-story building. Ever. Ever. I don't want to see it lit up as a three-story building. It's in the wrong place that never should have been allowed. I'm not sure that this board would have, if the developer had come in and said, I want to build 200, and I'm using round numbers, please. I want to build 200 units in the front. I want to build 200 units in the back. This board would have said, no way. I don't think a single person here today would have voted, yes, that's a great idea. Let's put 400 units there. Maybe it'll work if I come in piecemeal. Say 200 now, 200 in another year or two. And that's what's happened. Please stand your ground. Please defend our neighborhood. There's nothing that upsets me more than going down Camp Sergeant Road, pulling in, coming off the highway, going down Camp Sergeant Road, taking my first right into that, I don't know the name of the street, I've worked there so many years down the streets over there, but take that first right into the mobile home park and see that whole neighborhood lit up. Because the board approved Charles going in without any regard to the dozen families that live there. This is your opportunity to make sure that that doesn't happen again. And again, if you haven't looked at the lights at night, that's not going to change. We took the balcony off. That doesn't make any difference. Please protect us. Please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Thank you for your comments.
What was your name again?
Good evening. Nancy Harrington, Leaven's Spruce Street. I promise you I'll be short. First of all, I'd like to request, I know it's lit, I need to put it closer. Barbara Emmero had sent a letter, so she asked if I would reiterate if you would read that. I'm not sure if you're going to, but I told her I'd promise I'd ask. First of all, I'd like to thank you for the, thanks, for the accommodations you have already done. We have to acknowledge that you've responded to our requests, and I thank you for that. Now, for things that you won't be happy with. First, but, this is a question. I'm not sure if you can answer me until I'm done, and is the buffer. I know you've referred to it as open space, and you've done some calculations including that. My question is, can the buffer space be used by the residents of the apartments? For example, could they put a picnic bench there? Is it a place that they can actively use? Or is a buffer considered something that cannot be used by anybody? I know it can't be built on, but it's used, so I'd like clarification on that if you could, because that would dramatically change that concept of open space and the perspective of how much there is regarding the whole project. Okay. I find it interesting, and I might be wrong, so I apologize if I'm incorrect, but I believe this is the first time that an attorney has presented for the applicant, meaning that, and this is my opinion, it's my personal opinion, that I think it's significant that an attorney is presenting for the applicant, because I was sitting back there thinking, my God, we're setting up a case. And I'm sorry, that's just my opinion. I may be way off, but I think it's significant that an attorney, unlike previous presentations, is leading this and is going specifically into legal aspects that you need to be aware of. I know that's an important consideration. I'm not saying that that's not something that you should take anything but seriously, but I would encourage you, I would ask you, to use the professional opinions of the staff that are employed by this town, meaning Tim Thompson. He wrote a significantly long and detailed memos, not just recently, but previously. And I would hope that you would rely on his professional opinion. And, let's see, I have a targets receipt. I wrote notes. Okay, and basically, that's it. That I wanted to be able to encourage you to use professional opinions. I think you're all saying the right things, and, you know, as I've said before, I don't begrudge them trying to make a profit on this. I don't. That's what his, it's his land. He should be able to do with it what he wants to get as much money out of it. There was one more comment. They keep on asking, well, what is the right number? I know that they're very smart people. They could calculate what would be an acceptable number, because there is specific there is specific ordinances that Tim talks about, is so much per acre. They could do the calculations, and they know that there is a number you could do not deny. They could do that easily. But they want to be able to get more. And again, I don't blame them. I'm not taking this personally, even though it is in my backyard. But no, I really, I think that, as I've said before, I don't begrudge him for wanting to do what he does. But the town does not own, owe him a particular outcome. That's not our job. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nancy. And we'll get your answer on the question about buffers. I don't want to answer off the cuff because I'll be wrong. Any other members of the public who wish to weigh in? And I do have Barb's letter. I was going to read it. That's what I was finding as. If you'd like. It's up to you.
That's fine.
Okay. Let's do that. So this is a letter that was submitted through the town's web portal to, and I think it went to every one of the board members. I know that I heard Lynn got it and Nelson had gotten it. Hopefully, everybody did get it and have a chance to read it themselves. But, and it's also, I submitted it to the town, so it'll be in the record. This is dated April thirtieth, 2023. Dear Chairman Best and Planning Board Members, I live at One Spruce Street in a but the park place property, but I'm unable to attend the meeting on Tuesday, May fourth. I requested this letter to be read at the meeting and placed into the minutes. I would like to reiterate my plea made in person at each of the previous meetings on this matter. Please vote as recommended by the Community Development Department and do not approve the second set of apartments on the property. Before I jump into the second paragraph, I do just want to comment on the fact that reading a letter into the record like this is something I do when it's a relatively brief letter. I wouldn't tackle this with a, you know, five page or something, but it is only one page. Adding a tiny bit of open space does nothing to how the building will present to we abutters. I have attached two pictures of my current view of the property. Please note the amount of light that comes through the trees from the current building, which is on the opposite end of the property from me. Now imagine the amount of light right on the other side of the one hundred-foot buffer, almost right in my backyard. Also keeping in mind that it will actually be worse when all the apartments are occupied. And the new splash of light around the top of the corner towers won't even go off at night like the red light from the individual apartments hopefully would. Note that the trees in the buffer are largely pines with some higher canopy deciduous trees. So we would not even get much respite from the light in the summer. Mr. Monahan was originally willing to work with the abutters and had planted arborvitae in the woods behind our homes to add some natural screening. As you can see from the final picture, two of the four planted in my backyard, my back woods have totally died, and a third is not doing well. I have emailed Mr. Monahan about this, but his desire to work with the abutters seems to have vanished, as he never replied or did anything to replace the dead trees. Mr. Monahan also stated at a meeting about phase one that there would be no balconies on the buildings. When I posed that question, I was quite dismayed to see that the current building does in fact have balconies. So I ask you, how can his word be trusted? Balconies mean outside living and hence more noise pollution, as well as larger blocks of light from the balcony openings. Beside the obvious lack of open space and crazy density of adding to these additional buildings, I beg of you to consider the Spruce Street residents and not flood us with a bank of light and noise from the proposed additional building. Enough is enough. Please vote this down at this May meeting and stop the dragging out of the issue. Sincerely, Barb asketh, One Spruce Street in Merrimack. And there are three photographs attached to it, which are consistent with what she described in her letter. Okay.
Okay. My name's Beth Burns. I live at Five Spruce Street. I'd like to give credit to the board members tonight for stating their concerns and, and their feelings of things. I greatly appreciate that very much. And as I've stated at dozens of our other meetings, I've tried to understand things from a business perspective, you know, in Mr. Monahan's career. I understand that. I understand that they've changed things a little bit tonight. I don't consider, if you look at the size of this lot compared to the size of the building that's already there, plus what they still wish to build, the reduction they've made on some of these things is not significant enough. And it doesn't change the fact on what small space we have, the lot space compared to these buildings, compared to the population of people. Like, like Mr. Mills noted, you know, being two hundred and something feet from our back doors. It's one thing if it was two hundred and fifty feet from the buffer itself. But two hundred and fifty, you know, that close to our back doors, that basically, our yard is nothing. Because those apartment buildings are so large. I showed everybody the pictures of the lighting at night. Come look at it during the day. It, as I've stated before, the current building looks like it's built right up by the buffer. And that, that's how large it is. Now, I understand and appreciate him mentioning that this one would be, the second one would be smaller. I understand that. And smaller is better than the same or larger. I credit that. But it still doesn't change the fact of the lot space, the size of the building that's there, the other building, and the other buildings he still wishes to build. Plus the traffic, the people, it just, it's just, I just feel like, it's like sitting, I feel like I'm, honestly, I feel like I'm in the White House sometimes when I come to the meetings. It's like, it's like we're sitting in a room, you know, half Democrats, half Republican, and we just can't seem to come to a happy medium together. It's just a, you know, it's just a back and forth with, well, I'll, I'll sacrifice this a little bit. Well, you know, two hundred and eight down to one seventy-eight, that's a twenty-two. That, that's a very small digit. You know, I just feel that if we could just come to a better compromise and a better agreement from a business perspective, from people having the maturity and consideration to be, you know, be honest with yourself about what prob, where this property, where this property lies, how it affects the neighbors, how it affects the town itself. If you could be those kind of people and just make some more sacrifice on this and compromise and working better with us on our concerns, you know, if everybody started to act like that, we could make the country better, and we could make this town better. And I'd greatly appreciate, you know, everything isn't about business. It isn't about your checkbook. You know where all the wealth is? Wealth is in here, in here. That's where the wealth is. And I'm sorry, I just, I just really hope that we can still, and again, I've, I've thanked him and I've given him credit for things he's changed, and I, and I still appreciate those things. But because of how large this is, we still need some more change. We still need some more reality and more compromise and agreement to benefit all involved. That's, that's all I'm asking for.
Thank you. Other members of the public who wish to weigh in? Anyone? Okay, then we'll close the public hearing and invite the applicant to come back to the table. There were a couple of things brought up in the public testimony to address, and one for the staff to understand more about how the buffer can be used. I was first curious about the status of the Roundabout and what its future will be. I know Mr. Mills was calling it a cul-de-sac, but I think Roundabout is what he meant.
Evening.
Good evening, sir.
Tom Monahan, North, and proud of Park Place.
Touch the microphone again?
You need your mic up.
It's pretty close.
Hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Yeah, that sounds right.
Yeah. Tom Monahan, owner of Park Place, managing member of Park Place, and the proud managing member. But the Roundabout, as it always has been stated, and as it was a part of the approval, it was going to be in place and working at, at phase two, whatever phase two is. And, and that, that has always been the case. It was part of the approval years ago. But, but that's the case. Phase two, the next phase, whatever goes in, it's got to be completed.
So does that mean somewhere in phase two, or at the beginning of it, or at the end of it?
It's going to be, it has to be done at, for CO for phase two.
Okay. Do you plan to do it at the very end, just for the CO, or is there a plan to do it earlier?
We've, we've talked about it, but truthfully, the plan is at the end of, end of, at CO. And it's going to, it's going to take a while to do it. We have to deal with the outlets and the timing of it. We certainly don't want to be doing it Friday night after Thanksgiving or something, you know. So we've, we've been working with the outlets as to when it, when we can do it. But, you know, really, with, with Slate just getting occupied last week, you know, we're, we're taking a look at how the traffic's moving and see how that goes. We're just playing it by ear right now. But it, it has to be done by CO for phase two.
Is Slate fully open?
Yes.
How many rented apartments are there?
It's unbelievable. There, it's the best I've seen in any apartment complex, market rate complex. They opened up the first phase, I think, February twenty-eighth, the second phase, I'm not sure when that was. And then they, I believe, got the CO a couple of weeks ago or so. And there are eighty units occupied right now. Fifty percent of the units are leased. It's a project, it's a development that normally would take a year to stabilize to be at maybe ninety, ninety-five percent occupancy, and it's earmarked for probably four to five months from the initial CO, which is fantastic. It's, it's huge, a lot of activity, a lot of different age groups that have been discussed, the young, the younger thirty-year-old kids, and, and then the retired people, and I can still call them kids too. But, but it's a, it's a, it's a great mix.
I haven't been out there recently to see whether the eighty that are occupied so far have had any noticeable traffic pattern develop?
They, they have not.
I don't know if anybody else has.
But that's only eighty. We may see, see expedite the, the Roundabout.
Okay. On the buffer between your property, the, the buildings and the neighboring property, I think in the last discussion about open space, the idea of somebody walking their dog there or whatever was okay or, or expected kind of a thing. And there's a little discussion tonight about picnic tables and that sort of thing. And what, what is sort of the anticipation for?
Exactly. Passive, passive recreation, not picnic tables, just, you know, if you're taking a walk, take a walk. But we're not, we're, we're not going to do anything that would create a traffic out there.
Do you have any comments or reply to the discussion about the trees that were planted that haven't taken as well as we hoped?
A hundred percent. Those trees were not required to be planted. I went and talked with the abutters and said, let's go. We actually went out and walked the site with the abutters, put stakes in the ground, and put them where the, where they wanted to, the trees, and as many as they wanted. And we, we did it, and they are right. The trees, there, there aren't many that have survived. So I always thought a site plan that would be coming back in and we'd come up with something better to mitigate their, you know, frankly, both their view of us and our view of them.
Understood. I, I recognize that I don't, don't think this board imposed a requirement for those trees, but it certainly was something that came to us as being a cooperative effort with the neighbors that bought some goodwill with the board for sure.
And, and it was not successful with respect to the.
Understood.
I was planting, I was planting evergreens in the woods, you know, and hoping that they would, they would work. At that same, at that very, that's very same planting, I had another development where I planted just as many evergreens in the field, and they all survived. So.
Just needed to be an open area better.
Yeah.
I think with your representation of how you intend to make the buffer available, that's, that kind of passive recreation is obviously clearly allowed. And so I don't necessarily have to dive into the regulation to say, if you're, if you represent, you're not putting picnic tables there. And certainly if they appear somewhere, somebody will complain that it's a violation. But I, I'm satisfied on the answer about how the buffer would be used. Is it two hundred and forty feet from the building to your property line?
I, I, I take their word for it. I'm, I'm sure that they're not making it up. If it's, 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 I know, I know the buffer, the, the, we are setback from the actual buffer, so it probably is two forty. You know, or two fifty. To the property line. Okay.
Or to the back door.
We can probably look it up. Yeah, let's take a look at it. It's, if it's two forty to the property line, it's not a huge amount more than that to the back door because they're just residential lots. They're not huge. But I was curious about that. Was there anything else that you heard from any of the public comments that you wanted to respond to?
May I? May I?
Yes, sir.
Yes. I mean, Morgan can, can address the other issues, but this is an issue that's close to me. People are saying that I'm being greedy with respect to units. I don't know if those people have ever awakened at night being homeless or not knowing where they're going to be. But I've seen a lot of that. And I, I want more units. That's what I want. I want more units. We need housing. Housing is critical, critically important. And this land is zoned industrial with no height restrictions. And I wouldn't do that. That, that's not a threat or anything because if I get denied and, you know, at the end of the day, I'm not building a fifty, sixty-foot high-rise industrial building. That will never happen. But units are very, very important. I've been the chairman of the Nashville Housing Authority. I've been a commissioner for thirty-five years, been the chairman for ten. And, and I know how important it is. We, we, we're trying to add thousands of units in the city of Nashua, affordable units, even Nashville Housing, we're even doing market rate units. We're doing, there's, there's a balance. There's a balance that is required. And no, frankly, I don't think there are few, there are, there are few people in the state that have done as many workforce affordable housing units in the state than myself in trying to make a profit out of it. Done two hundred and forty units in Londonderry, eighty-three units in Bedford, two hundred and twenty-four units in Exeter, that are all, all project, well, a couple of them are still ongoing. We're doing, as a commissioner, again, at the Housing Authority, we're doing two hundred and sixteen affordable units in Nashua. We have got a plan in front of the town for six hundred units in Nashua, affordable units. Nobody knows how important workforce housing is to this state and our community. At least, then, then I feel how important it is. So I do, I, yes, I, I did come in. We, we came in with the maximum amount of units because there are, there's thirty people, thirty families now that aren't going to have, aren't going to have the opportunity to have a unit. And that's important to me. It may not be important to anybody else, but that's very important to me. So I'm not ashamed of coming in with two hundred and eight units. I'm not ashamed of creating a transition between single-family houses and restaurants and, and some retail and, you know, other apartments. I'm not ashamed of that. In fact, I'm proud of it. You know, I did the outlets. I owned the outlets. I owned a hundred and sixty-two acres out there when this whole development, all this development got approved. I had a letter of intent to buy Fidelity from Digital. I was going to buy Digital, and Fidelity came to me and said, let's make a deal. So I'm very proud. This is a legacy for me. I'm not fooling around. I'm not, of course, I'm, it's a far-profit business. But when I heard Fidelity was going to take that property, are you kidding me? You know, it was, it's, it was an, it was in the nineties. It was an unbelievable opportunity for this town. I live three miles from here. I've lived three miles. I've lived three miles from here before most of you people were born. This, you know, forget the town line. This is part of my community too. And, and so I'm proud of the units that I was asking for. I'm proud that we, we listened to you. I'm proud that there's no mention of the fact that you wanted a new entranceway in here like the old one. We did that. Nobody's commented on that, but you don't have to. I don't, you know, that's fine. But I'm very, very proud of this project, one way or another. And I want to thanks for, thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Mr. Monahan. Morgan, is there any other parts that you want to make sure you comment?
Well, I have a couple of comments. I know that Mr. Mills raised issues about the 400-foot wide building, 45 feet tall, 240 feet to the back door. But I just have to point out that the back property line, the height of the buildings, and yet we've said, I've made the point of saying you can't compare this to what was approved, but you have to bear in mind what was approved. And that's a parking garage. And if this doesn't get approved and that were built, that's bigger. That's taller. There are all the lights from the office, all the lights from parking garage, which don't go out at night. That's approved. That's a project in place. So we're improving the impacts on the neighbors by this project. We're not improving the impacts on the neighbors from ground zero. That's true. But we are considering the neighbors and that's the extra step we took. That's what we brought forward tonight. Reduced height, reduced impacts by lighting, no outside, extended balconies where people can hang out, sit out, do things. Those are all important, important modifications to this project to try to reduce the impact on the neighbors to the point where there isn't that concern. I think the only other comment I had was, I think we've answered the passive recreation. I guess reluctantly I'll address Ms. Harrington's comment and then attorneys presenting. I do a lot of presenting to a lot of planning boards. To the extent that this is a setup for anything, I present every case as if it may end up in court. But I present it with all the evidence. I was asked to come in and particularly present tonight because the memo that you all received has three pages which deal with interpretation of legal. Gordon could have come up here and presented. And then he would call me in and I would say, well, I disagree with the legal interpretation. I just let off because that's the big issue I wanted everybody to know right up front. We disagree with. You can't go down the dimensional path when it says density. I think you all understood that. I tried to be as succinct as I could, but, you know, I, whether I present or Gordon presents, you know, it's, I appreciate that maybe Ms. Harrington thinks I carry more weight or something, but it's just the way I organize things, so.
For my part, I don't think lawyers are half bad.
Don't make a motion.
So I think all the other questions really were.
Mr. Chairman, if I may just, if I may just address the issue of sewer service to the property. I would respectfully disagree with Mr. Thompson's assessment that there's no way we can understand whether there is capacity in the sewer system for this development. Because you've heard testimony tonight from a professional engineer that said, you know, we will study the system and appropriately address it. And there are a number of alternatives for ways to mitigate that impact to the, to the town system. So I, I think that, you know, the biggest issue is always whether there's capacity at the plant to deal with the additional flow. And there is more than adequate. In fact, I've heard that they're actually looking for additional flows to make the plant function more efficiently. So that's. Yeah, the, I mean, the, the conditional approvals for all of the previous approvals that we've gone through have approved some level of impact that is within that allocation that was initially approved for the, for the outlet, outlet village. So, and the final design was left to site plan. So, I mean, we're not looking for any special treatment. And, you know, we just want to take things one step at a time.
Thank you for that. I was, my own opinion was also that, like some of the other items in our criteria, they get addressed at the site plan review stage. And sewer capacity is, is one of those, as we would with any site plan you review. If you couldn't supply yourself with sewer, you wouldn't be able to build a building. And there's an engineering solution to virtually any problem. And especially if it's a pipe size problem, you know, it'd be, might be expensive, but you put in a bigger pipe. I, frankly, I'm, I'm surprised in going through this process about how many of our criteria are deferred by our staff to site plan review because that tells me they don't belong here in the continued, the conditional use permit process if we're just going to punt them to a later review. But it may be that, you know, there's other things that should be here that aren't here anyway. Other comments or whatever that you want to share as testimony? And then I want to open it up the board to just have a discussion that goes wherever the board thinks it ought to go.
I, I think just to reiterate what.
Touch your microphone again. They're telling me you're not on. This, this, do you have an earphone that you?
No, there's a guy at a window behind you.
The, the building size that we are proposing is significantly less than that that was previously approved in the previous CUP. And I would just point that out that, you know, we're not talking about nothing or the building that we're proposing. Because at a $3 million valuation, that piece of land is going to be developed for something. And this is the current proposal, which we believe is respectful of not only all the approvals that have gone before it, but also listening to the, the concerns of the, the abuddars and the board.
Can you bring up the picture that shows the overview of the site plans in different proposals? I don't know if the site plans are there. Yeah, that. I, I know that you've done the description of the difference in open space. And I assume if we were calculating the footprints of buildings, it would be the same square footage, it's just traded from one to the other. But do you know what your square footage of the building footprints? Not necessarily the square footage of the building with five floors that are, you know, 20,000 per floor or something.
I don't, Mr. Chairman. I'd have to, I'd have to, yeah, I'd have to, I'd have to look at it more closely.
I guess with the percentages, we could calculate that. And if 97,000 square feet is 32%, then 200,000 square feet is the other 68%.
Yeah, that also includes roads and parking. So the, the inverse of the, of the 32% and the 37% includes roads and parking.
Okay, I got you.
You understand?
Yep, I do. Okay.
But, but to your point, the location of the buildings relative to the buffer in the property line has not changed significantly from the 2019 approval to the 2023 proposal. So we are, you know, we're maintaining that buffer, which incidentally is in excess of that which would normally be required.
Okay. Thank you for that. I think, let me offer one of my own comments just because it came to mind. Thank you for this memo that's got the comparison for all the uses with the square footage on it. I think that's really handy to look at. I think in the evolution of the process, obviously the apartment number went way up. The office space went way down and almost to nothing. And I think in terms of the value of a mixed-use development, office space probably has the least impact to the average person in town coming to the property. Unless you work there or you go to a business that's there, nearly 100,000 square feet of office space or very little office space doesn't mean a whole lot. The retail got reduced along the way. At one point it was as high as 37,000 square feet. And now it's more like 7,500 square feet. So a good chunk of the retail was gone. Is 7,400 square feet of retail everything that you're showing us? Or is that number out of date? Or it seems like what you're showing me on the map here has got more retail than that, even though that's.
No, it, it has five, there's 5,000 square feet. It's, it's labeled as commercial on this plan. So there's 5,000 square feet of commercial in the, in the residential building. And then there's an additional 2,400 square feet in the standalone building.
Okay.
Yeah. In, you know, in this building here, this space here, that's 2,400 square feet. That's 5,000 square feet.
So that totals 7,400. And where's the 5,000 square feet of office?
Second floor.
Of that, of that building?
Of this building.
Okay. And then the restaurant space, 8,000 is the first floor of the building.
Is the first floor.
A couple of locations.
Two separate spaces.
Okay. So at, at one point, it looks like in the 2022, the December 27th one, under restaurant, there's two numbers, 7,600 and 15,800. Is that, was there 22, 23,000 square feet of restaurant proposed at one point?
Ah, yes, because there was, in the original, in the, in the, the previous CUP, there was a 7,500-square-foot standalone restaurant that was approved and actually went through site plan approval. And then in the, where this residential, this new residential building is, was a mixed-use building with a number of different uses in it. No residential, lots of office, lots of restaurant, lots of retail.
Okay. But, so just four months ago, there was 22,000 square feet of restaurant in several locations. And now there's less restaurant in what we have.
This hasn't changed since the conceptual plan that we presented in January or, yeah, in January.
So on the memo, it says December 27th, '22 was when we had 22, 23,000 square foot of restaurant.
Between phase one and phase two.
Correct. And that was with the phase two that we're not proposing. That was without the residential.
I know that had 432 residential units in December. I mean, literally four months ago.
Yeah, I, I would have to look at that. You want to refresh my memory?
I'm comparing the third and fourth columns.
Yeah, I think that's 15,800 is an error. I think that belongs one column back. I think it belongs in the 2019 approval.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, the approved CUP currently has 15,800 square feet of restaurant.
Oh, okay. So that's just in the wrong column.
In the, in the phase two area where the new apartment building is shown and the standalone restaurant is 7,600.
Okay. So in total, the restaurants have gotten to be about half the size of whatever they were at their peak.
That's correct.
Hotel is basically the same. Event center has gone away completely after 2019. And I know that it's only 5,000 square feet, but it's one that sort of has a particularly significant impact in whether this feels like a mixed-use development where somebody's, you know, might have their wedding there or something like that. I know that the, there's, there's competing discussions about what's good or bad about the proposal. And I think the neighbors are looking for less of everything. And then the staff with the idea of mixed use is saying more of the commercial. And that isn't necessarily in harmony with what the neighbors are asking you to do. But the, the loss of the event center seems to be symbolic or at least significant to folks in, as they think about this. You know, like, like I said, a convention center, a place for a wedding, a place for a, who knows why people would gather into, you know, big event for a conference or something. It seems like foregoing that as a part of the proposal costs you a lot of goodwill for only 5,000 square feet of space savings.
Well, the, the hotel could have some meeting space in it, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't categorize it as a, as a, I mean, they typically do, right? But not to the degree that you would have a wedding there or something like that. So, and there may be a, a space where, you know, people have breakfast or whatever. That's typically, you know, if you go to, you go to a courtyard or something like that and that's kind of what they, what they do.
That's not what I envision when you say an event center. I'm looking for a large space for large gatherings, for businesses or.
That is not proposed.
It was.
It was.
And it's gone.
You're, you're absolutely right. It was part of the original, the original approval. But as we've discussed, there is a lot of stuff that was in that that is not in this.
Yeah, and I wasn't necessarily disagreeing with that. I was just saying that in terms of what people liked about it, that was a favorite piece. I think the specialty retail going from 37,000 and some to 7,500 is obviously a very significant loss, 30,000 square feet of it. At the same time, with the outlet mall there and the, the area by the DCU Bank, there is a lot of other retail going on here within a walkable distance. Anyway, I just wanted to sort of comment on the, what's changed about it. The change in the office space doesn't trouble me very much. The event center is probably my least favorite thing to see, having gone away in terms of it being, feeling like an integrated space. And that's really where the CUP piece comes back in, is that it's a master plan, sort of designed organization where people might go to, go and use those things. So somebody who lives here, you know, if they're a member of some organization that's looking to host a education event or something.
It's part of the community.
You know, there's one nearby. With that in mind, anyway, let me, let me let everybody else have a chance to talk to. Sure. Of course.
Tom Monahan again. We, we had looked at the second floor, the 10,000 square feet up, up in the second floor as potential. And actually, we've got a restaurant that would like to have a meeting, whatever they call it, area, a conference area up there. But we, I actually was sort of kiboshing it because it's right at the corner and it's close to where the abuddars are. And I, I just thought that, you know, it would be better suited as, as office. But we have been talking to some restaurants and they would be interested in the second floor. But, I mean, I'd like to leave that on the table. I just, I, I, I sort of have kiboshed it because, you know, the abuddar, it would not be, I don't think the, the abuddars would like it.
Okay. Thank, yeah.
Mr. Monahan, I, I just want to say like, so when I first heard about the, the difference in proposal of this, it was there's nobody renting offices anymore. And like, I think we totally get that, right? But everything else is going away too. And that's what I think we don't understand. Why is the restaurant, why are the restaurant spaces being cut? Why is the event center being cut? Why is the commercial space being cut? Like, why, I totally understand the office space, but why everything else? And, and I do think people come from all over to go to the outlets. And so there's some attractions that you could really bring there. And again, to leave to your legacy. And I just don't understand. Like, to me, it was proposed because nobody's renting offices, we're changing the plan. But really, it looks like the office space is the smallest part that's changing.
Well, certainly the, the retail and office are having a tough go right now. It's just a very difficult thing. I've, I've got a, a building out in Exeter that, it's a 50,000-square-foot building that we're, we're trying to lease. And all I'm getting really are 6,000-square-foot brew pubs, you know, you know, really. You know, really, it's probably one of the things, if I build it, they will come. But I'm reluctant to build it because they might not come. So it's, 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 it just, there's, there's no market out there, and, and it's not financeable unless I have a tenant. I mean, I had a tenant here early on for a hundred and twenty thousand square feet. And, and we were negotiating back and forth, and, and we had an LOI. And they upped and left. And, you know, there went my, there went my office, office tenant that, you know, a long time ago, early on in the, in the, but they disappeared. And, you know, I happened to bring a couple of friends of mine who were kingpins in the retail business up to take a look at it. And as they left, they, one of them looked at me and said, "Don't do retail. Don't do retail. It's, it's not gonna work here." And I, I, I listened to him. It's, 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 I guess COVID messed up a lot of stuff.
I, it, it did, but it was sort of accelerating things that are already going on. And most of the places where you see successful redevelopment, either here in town or anywhere else, what we sort of used to call retail, always has to be something that is a personal experience. Where you actually have to be there. You can't order it from Amazon. If you can order it from Amazon, you know, that's, the, 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 the brick and mortar place is gonna suffer. But, you know, and I don't want to pick on Merrimack three sixty just to bring them up, but everything in there except for the beer place and the dollar store is an experience. You jump on the trampolines, you go to the gym, you eat at the thing, you have the ice cream, you go to the bank. They're all things that you actually need to go to, to actually benefit from. And that's sort of what retail looks like these days. Now, I don't know, is there some end to that market where there's no more restaurants that want to come to town? So far, I know, Maureen, you mentioned five restaurants. There's actually thirty restaurants in town.
I'd try and like I want to vote on it.
Yeah. Anyway.
If I could just ask a question, you know, because it's, sounds like we're evolving a little bit here, is, do I get a sense that the seventy-four hundred square feet of commercial is not that important in the mixed-use thing? You know, we, we try to follow the mixed-use, which includes commercial, office space, I mean, the five thousand square foot office space, not the seventy-four hundred commercial. But five, five thousand square foot office was more like a, you know, a shared office area where people who live there could go and have a meeting or something. But if, if in the mixed-use scenario that we're talking about, you would prefer to see something else in that five thousand square feet rather than office, like more restaurant or the event center of five thousand square feet, we'd like to hear that. We just don't want to be held against this when we show up, and there's no, there's no office space here anymore.
So I want to be careful of the dynamic. I'm sure everybody will offer their view of what they want to see and the recipe for the mixed-use. But at the same time, and, and I won't stop them from doing that, I'll even offer my own opinions. But when it comes to applying the criteria for the CUP, nothing in there sort of gives us the ability to redesign your site for you.
Right.
I, I, I like the convent, the event center. And if there were, if the office went away completely and added the event center back, I would like that. I think that would be a positive. And I would not miss the five thousand square feet of office that's spate, that's left. If there was a way to, to crank up the specialty retail and restaurant higher than it is, I, I think, I'd certainly like that. There's, there's, I mean, there's, there's a difference in square footage, but in the big scheme of how many square feet there are on the site, it's like thirty thousand square feet of, of less retail than there was. And so it's not like there's a ton to move back in that direction. And then the question is the, the, you know, the, the management of all of the residential. And does it work on the site? And now, does it, is there a way to address some of the neighbors' concerns and things like that? And I think that's a puzzle to talk through with folks. But again, I feel like I'm sort of dictating the discussion without everybody else's views.
I will just generally say that when you start to try to balance your commercial and your office space and just call, you know, restaurant as part of being commercial, that the balance changes in with the residential, because it's the balance of the traffic. So if you have residential in with commercial and office space, that traffic is there during the day when your residents are not. And then as they're all leaving, then your residents are coming back in again. So it, it does change the balance when you start getting rid of that commercial, restaurant, office space. You know, the other, even if you do something at the hotel and put a conference center in, that's still transient, if you will. It's coming in and going out. It's not going to bother your residential as much as having a total of four hundred and two apartments where everybody's coming home at the same time, and most everybody is leaving at the same time. So it's just, it's the balance on how all that fits together and how the flow works. Having lived in apartments all my life, except for the last twenty years.
Almost all, then. Okay, anybody else want to have comments on any part of the application? Nelson?
I just want to say, I think, I think we, the planning board, shouldn't be designing this site to that detail. I think, you know, Mr. Monahan owns it. He's gonna pay the taxes, and he's got a figure way of doing it. And I don't think we should be telling him.
He knows his business.
He knows his business much better than I know his business, that, that I'm sure of. And so I'd be more inclined to leave it to them, give them the guidance and tell them what we like. But in the end of the day, he's gonna pay the taxes on the property. That's my thoughts on this.
But, you know, it's an important comment. And as I, I was separating the two things before with designing the site versus applying the CUP criteria. I don't think that we could tell this applicant, "We won't vote for this unless you have an event center." I don't think that we would be within our purview to do that. We could certainly say that we think it fits better in our CUP criteria if it had that kind of a mixed use, because it's master-planned and it's integrated and that sort of thing, but. Barb?
Yeah, I have a question for Robert regarding the sewer pipe. How much or the length of the pipe do they think might be too small, that might need to get replaced? Are we talking a couple of feet? Or are we talking miles in order to be able to get to the main sewer line?
I don't know if Robert would know or the applicant would know.
I have no information on that, but.
Remember, we talked about that, that was one of the issues.
Wouldn't that be covered in site plan, though?
The problem is, if it's miles of pipe, and-
Well, then they wouldn't be able to build it.
Exactly.
Still on his nickel, whether it's a million dollars worth of pipe or a hundred thousand dollars worth of pipe.
I mean, the issue is that if it, if it can't be solved economically, then we're gonna have to be back here, you know, with, with, with different ideas, you know?
But also, not to interrupt you, but it would affect how I feel about number five criteria and the infrastructure.
Well, let me put it this way. There are, there is a section of pipe. I don't really know offhand how long it is. I think it's on the order of, you know, maybe five hundred feet or something like that. That is, that is flat, and that causes low, low constraints. On the other hand, there's an eighteen-inch sewer underneath the DW Highway from Whittier Place. So one option would be to do a force main up to the top of the hill and discharge that way. I mean, we haven't figured that out yet because we don't know the dimension of the, of the engineering issues. But there is an engineering solution regardless. So, and it's, it doesn't appear at this point that it's something that's a deal killer. So that, that would be the, the best answer I can give you at this point. Keep in mind that the very same issues existed with the approved CUP. So, you know, for what it's worth.
Now you have more residential.
We do, but the overall flow from the, from, from the property, including the, including the outlets, is capped at a hundred and thirty-five thousand gallons a day, because that's how much water we can use. And, and that capacity has been agreed to. So, and we're not exceeding that capacity. So that, that's, that's just sort of a logical explanation of, of, of a, of a technical issue.
I think to, in my view on the technical issue, and I don't want this to necessarily spill over into, you know, what I think of the, the apartments and all that. But as to a technical issue like the sewer, when the, when the sewer plant can handle your flow, and it's really a matter of how do you connect to it? That's a typical site plan sorted out and, you know, solve your problems. Same as it would be for electricity. Yeah, the electric lines don't come to your place yet, but they're going to when you build something. And so those kinds of solutions are pretty routine as a part of a proposed engineering project. I think really the functioning of the site, and, you know, we didn't really, I think the increase in, in open space is good. I like it. I don't know how many extra square feet that, that courtyard area is within the building, separate from any other changes you made. But I do see that, you know, now if somebody wanted to sit down outside and read a book, there's a place to do it. Or walk a dog, or, I'm probably, nobody wants to, you know, collect up all the dog poop right there. Maybe they go somewhere else. But there's at least a little bit of open space for the people that live in that apartment. And the other apartment that exists has the pool and the clubhouse area for some recreation. And so I, I think it's an improvement. Do you know how many square feet that?
It's, I measured it at, I believe it's sixteen, sixteen eight seventy-five.
Sixteen thousand eight seventy-five, seventeen thousand-
So it's close to a half an acre.
Yeah. Third, half, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, I don't want to cut off comments from, from folks. We can kind of tick through the, the criteria, or at least the two or three that are unresolved, to sort of see what people think is the, where, where the applicant falls short, if they fall short, or what we think in terms of whether they've achieved it. You want to do it that way and kind of? All right. So the first criteria, which is the one I think is probably the most contested, is that the property in question is reasonably suited for the proposed uses and will not create an undue hazard or excessive expenditure of public funds to ensure that public health and safety are maintained throughout the following, throughout and following the development of the parcel. I don't, I don't want to precast the discussion. Where do you guys want to go with that for discussion? Nelson?
I'll just start off by saying, I, I think that, I think the property meets the requirement, that requirement. I think that this plan for that property meets that requirement, I should say. It's, I think they've, it's certainly more intensive use than we had originally intended, but it's a different use. And I think it still can fit in there. So I'm leaning in that direction.
I would agree.
No.
Says no. Anyone else that wants to weigh in on that one? I think, in my mind, I divided that criteria into two parts. And all of the stuff at the, at the second and third line about creating undue hazard and excessive expenditures and all of that, I don't think are an issue. I think the economic analysis answers that, and I don't see anything that is, you know, dangerous to, you know, pedestrians or something like that. So the real question is, this first part about the property in question is reasonably suited to the proposed uses. And the proposed uses are, you know, residential, retail, hotel, apartment, a, a, a restaurant, and that sort of thing. The intensity of the uses, I don't know, is what is embraced by this criteria. It's the mix of the uses, which is the language that's there. I don't know where I would go in terms of deciding whether it's reasonably suited. It's certainly an improvement over the one previously where I didn't feel like someone could step out and get off the grass if a car was coming by quickly. I also do like the entrance, the way that it's done with the median with the trees in it before. And I think that's a bit of an improvement over the way that it was laid out last time. I like the little angled end onto it as well. I know Mr. Monahan mentioned that and thought we ignored it. I didn't. Anyone else want to weigh in on?
I think there's, there's kind of two things here. So the zoning approved, the two oh eight. And so I, I feel like we're, I don't want to say handcuffed, but handcuffed, right? That they're-
Yeah, to their decision.
All I did was say, the planning board can allow up to. They didn't say we had to. They just said, "We'll grant you the variance because they're not, they use different criteria for doing this." So they didn't say, "You have to do this, planning board."
Got it.
And they were very specific about that when they made this determination to say that this was not pushing the planning board to allow this.
Got it.
That it's up to the planning board to decide. You can if you want, but you don't have to.
And I appreciate the care that the ZBA put into stating things that way, because sometimes it can be unclear. However, even if they hadn't, neither board can step on each other's jurisdiction. So we can't give variances, and they can't give planning, site plan approvals, and distinctions are there.
So then the, the other, you know, crux, it seems, is that since Merrimack has no firm set percentage definition of mixed use, right? Technically, if you do, you know, ninety-nine percent multifamily and one percent cafe, that is two uses, is that mixed use? I think that's a problem, and that's something that this project's bringing to light, and it should be addressed moving forward. I think some of the other issues have been, you know, setbacks. That's all, you know, zoning stuff. And that, as far as I know, based on the testimony from the applicant today, it meets, you know, those criteria.
Other comments or questions?
I agree with that.
I think that on, on Gilbert Crossing and Edgebrook, the one at the south end, something close to that's exactly what we told the applicant. Put some commercial in there, give me a hot dog stand. I think we actually said that. And that's your commercial, and it's now mixed use, and it qualifies. And part of that ranges from the origins of the concept of mixed use, where commercial was a higher taxpayer and the residential was sort of a net cost, where the commercial was a net payer, and they would balance each other out by having mixed use. That dynamic doesn't exist anymore. The, the residential is, is valuable enough to cover its own costs standing alone, which is why something like Gilbert Crossing can go through and the Edgebrook one, which are almost all residential. This particular site, being the outlet mall site, is really what this whole conditional use statute was written for, was dealing with how to make this a really cool master plan development. And I think that's the only reason why we haven't done this. Well, you know, give me one percent, a toenail worth of, of commercial is enough for me. That said, a hotel, I don't know how many square feet the hotel is, and eight thousand square feet of restaurant and commercial is more than we've ever imposed on somebody else with a similar development, mixed use. But again, it's, it's a unique site. Okay.
And, and the site is adjacent to premium outlets, adjacent to the commercial office that's on the road up to. So if you take it as a whole, Gilbert Crossing does not, other than the one restaurant, doesn't really have much there. Edgebrook, same thing, other than Harris Pond being across the street. This, this has a lot more with it while not being part of it.
Other comments or questions? Maureen?
So I just had this thought, too. I guess I also envisioned, like, Park Place, that I would be going there. Like, I would be, you know, going to a restaurant there, I would be going to a shop there. And the way it is right now, proposed, like, I wouldn't, I don't think Merrimack, people in the Merrimack community would be going there. It's more of a residential place. And I think that's what kind of changes the whole thing for me, and that just kind of popped in my head.
Other comments or questions? Do you want to move the discussion past number one to some of the others? Okay, number two was one, we decided this- Okay, number two was one, we decided the staff agrees is met. Number three and number four fell in the same category, that the staff agrees that those were met. Does anybody want to talk about two, three, and four nevertheless? Five is the one that deals with the sewer pipe, and I don't know if there's further discussion to have about that one, but it's got to do with infrastructure and utilities. The staff would wait on having a letter from the two entities saying that the capacity's there. I think that doing that is an unreasonable burden to put on any applicant, because they would have to somehow get an answer before they could get an answer. And it's sort of a dead end. That's why I was thinking that it belonged with the others that were satisfied at site plan review. But talk it through, whatever you guys want to say.
Well, as far as the water's concerned, there's a maximum capacity there for water usage combined with the outlets. There is another phase going in on the outlets, and MVD is saying that as long as you stay within those guidelines, you're fine, and there's sufficient usage. So it's just a matter of, when Phase Two comes in on the premium outlets, they need to make sure that they're within those guidelines. And there's excess right now, when you don't consider Phase Two, and there's still excess capacity to be able to be applied to Phase Two on the outlets.
Other comments on five?
Question. So, but wasn't the water allotment for Phase Two at the outlets already granted?
Yeah, it was. I think that's the point, is one hundred and thirty-five thousand gallons a day.
They've got that when they're ready to build Phase Two. What happens with this, though?
Oh, this was always intended to be a part of it.
Okay, it's part of that overall allotment?
Yep.
Yeah, I think they testified that the outlet mall that exists there today is using seventeen thousand out of the one hundred and thirty-five thousand. So there's already well over a hundred left. They would still, even if they used what they intended to use, there would still be twelve or fifteen thousand gallons a day for the expansion of the outlet mall, which would use, you know, some amount of water for whatever it does, but also recognize that that expansion that has not occurred in the ten years the outlet mall's been open is the exact kind of retail that we've been saying ain't nobody gonna do. So I don't know whether we'll, but obviously it's still an approved plan, so it is what it is. I don't want to ignore it, but I think that there's things that we could suggest to the applicant to improve. I'm just not sure harping on the water is the approach. And water and sewer are always tied together, because obviously whatever you take in, you're supposed to be able to get rid of. And if they had that allocation for the outlet mall property, it sort of comes part and parcel with some ability to get rid of it, although irrigation uses some. Six and seven were the buffers and the federal, state, and local environmental laws. I do want to talk about the buffers, because although the staff agrees that the applicants provided the required buffers, I know that that's an issue that the neighbors don't agree with. And I think that it will only do justice to have the conversation about those kinds of things. I think the staff's view is just applying a regulation that says you need to have so many feet. They have so many feet, they've met buffers. I think the neighbor's view is, how do we get the lights under control? I think some discussion about sound, but I think it's really about light under control.
Barbara?
Another technical question. So when you have buffers, and you have a setback, which they need to have both, and do you include the buffer as part of the setback? Or are they separate individual themselves?
It kind of depends how the regulation's written, but in this case, I think they're applying both cumulatively.
Well, that's what I can't tell by, based on.
Yeah. I think that they're required by regulation buffers a hundred feet, and then two hundred feet is what we kind of imposed on this site as a part of the CUP. And then there's something more than that, a little bit more than that, I think. Gordon's gonna tell me I'm wrong.
I'm on. The buffer, the required buffer is a hundred feet. The required building setback is two hundred feet. So from an adjacent residential, residentially zoned property or residential use.
So the total is three hundred?
No, the total is two hundred.
It's included.
Yeah, I think the application of that is that the first hundred that's buffer is but for passive recreation, essentially a no disturb, whereas a regular setback, you can put driveways and swimming pools and stuff like that in it.
Correct.
In a buffer. The buffer is for structures. So at any rate, they have about two hundred and some feet, which is, in the staff's view, adequate. I have, Nelson?
Yeah, I just had some thoughts on that. I think the buffer that's there presently is inadequate. And I'll say that right up front now, and I think they would agree with me, just from the photos we've seen from the neighbors and so on. And I think there are ways to construct a buffer of Arbor Vidae or some similar products that would completely screen this light issue, and I think it can be improved a lot. And I would be looking for that at the time of site plan review.
Yeah, I was thinking like, even if one were to install a six-foot fence along the property edge, right? That would block any light, and that would prevent.
Not from a four-story building.
Fair.
It's gonna be tall.
It would prevent people from walking through it as well.
Give them some privacy if they're in the buffer, if people were in the buffer.
I'd still rather see that residential building on the east side of this property and the others on the north side. Just swap those. I know it's huge, but that would give you more buffer.
Fair enough. Other comments or questions?
I would rather swap the residential, put it over to the right, and put the retailing over next to the.
Oh, I see. Yeah.
I don't, I don't know that it's reasonable to do it. It's just I would.
Didn't look like you would.
The foundation's been poured for the hotel.
Because then you've got the lower buildings against the property lines.
That's what I was thinking.
The butters.
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
Yeah, the buildings are very lit up.
I know.
So I agree in part with what Nelson said in terms of being able to do different plantings and make different planting requirements, and those are normal parts of site plan. And I think my neighbor across the street planted the row of the Arbor Vitae's in the sun where they could grow. And boy, now they're a fifty-foot tall wall.
They grow fast.
And they grow very tall, and they will grow together where you couldn't see anything through them. Not that, it would certainly take some time to do that. That could be some part of site plan review. I think the actual light fixtures themselves need some attention. The ones that are shining in the pictures that were shared with us, different fixtures can prevent that horizontal light cast, or at least contain it to where you intended the light to go and not going just an exposed light lamp bulb. And that can be part of the discussion. Doesn't really matter on the building that's there, because those will all be blocked by a new building if there is one. But what's on the side of that new building could be downcast lighting with the full cutoffs and all the things that are normal parts of discussion. So that you don't get that starry night look through the woods that is coming through right now. I am concerned about the impact on the neighbors, and I think it's a tough puzzle to just sort of say, you know, move the building a little bit further away, because whatever reasonable amount you could squeeze on this site, five or ten feet, isn't gonna make any difference. And you're not gonna be able to move it a hundred feet away, because there's no room for that. I'm also, back to my regulatory hat, saying we got a buffer and we got a setback, but for reasons we can't really pin down, this applicant is subject to all that plus some vague ambiguous amount. Troubles me as a regulatory approach. I don't, I wouldn't want to necessarily be down that rabbit hole. But looking for solutions to the light so that they're not shining horizontally, which is not particularly complicated. That's been a part of site plan regulations for twenty years. Maybe some part of the thought process for this. And constructing a better buffer with better plantings of different things. And it may include, I know that the land topography goes up like a little berm right at the property line or right close to it. And so you get, I don't know, six feet or five feet of elevation from that, and some plants on top of it would gain the benefit or whatever. Anyway, I think that having less of a visual impact on the neighbors is a good thing and perhaps necessary to make this kind of fit with this criteria about adequate and satisfactory buffers. I don't necessarily think that that gets to as far as the neighbors might like, because I know that their view or their sense of, I don't want to see it at all, is what they would like us to be able to achieve. I'm not sure that that is either achievable or within a planning board's regulation to say, you know, you've got a right not to see your neighbor at all. I can see my neighbors in my neighborhood, and the buildings that are around, and the school that's down the street. In the wintertime, I can see all the way through to the middle school. Just is what it is.
And if we lift this as industrial,
Could be a lot worse.
It could have been a lot worse than what they're doing now.
Yeah. No, that's true. And I don't want to make that sort of the trade-off in the same way that Mr. Monahan was saying, he wasn't threatening to do that. Industrial, there literally is no height requirement in Merrimack, which is why some of the warehouse projects come forward here that don't go elsewhere, because modern high bay warehouses with robotics in them, the taller the better. And a hundred feet tall, and frankly, we approved one here in Merrimack that was a hundred feet tall. They didn't build it, but we approved it. So I think that there's some room for the buffer to be part of the discussion and to be improved. Does anybody have anything else to say about buffers or that sort of thing? Okay. I think that's one where we take a bit of a stronger position than the town, than the staff does. Number eight is the one with the open space, and the staff's comment says to the board, we'll need to determine if there's sufficient internal open space as part of the amended application. The proposed amended CUP is drastically different than the initially approved CUP from 2017, and would need to be carefully considered. Staff notes that the revised proposal contains a new open space amenity in the courtyard, which should be part of the board's consideration. Generally speaking, this small area of open space in the vicinity of the buildings appears to be the only provision of open space, not already designated as either required buffers or stormwater infrastructure. That's the full staff comment. One of the things that I want to make sure we're paying attention to here is we've approved plans with less open space on this site than is here now. Now, they had less need for open space, because they had less residential development that needed a place to go and be and relax. But what's your guys' thoughts on the additional open space or open space in general?
I think they've made a lot of strides to take our notes into effect here.
I agree with that.
It's a tough site to have open space on.
I would disagree, because the folks who live in Building One are never going to impose on the people in Building Two. So they will never use that little square of land over there. They used to be parking lots. So that leaves them only with what they had originally the last time we saw them. It was that little buffer area on the north side. They're not gonna go dippy skinning into the reservoir on the east side, which is drainage, actually. And then there's not much around the west or the southern part of the building. So I don't see that there's a whole lot more than where we saw the last time, except for that little courtyard square in Building Two. So to say that, you know, yeah, they took some away, but there isn't any.
There's, from the last approved plan in nineteen, where there was ninety-seven thousand square feet, they're up to about a hundred and fifteen thousand, which is essentially that courtyard plus a little bits here and there. I want to think about the particular part of the regulation, and Nelson, you probably helped draft this, so you might know what it means. But the proposed development plan shall provide for a continuity of open space throughout the development. And open space in other recreational areas within the development shall be related to the projected town plans for such improvements. That really doesn't apply here, and should not be limited to trails and paths, although these are desirable features. What does continuity mean in that sentence?
That was my question as well. Thank you.
As best you can, and I know that I.
It was a long time ago, and I think we were just thinking, just that the open spaces, they wanted to get away from little islands of open space here and there. And the idea was to have some that kind of made it a walking path, or didn't want to limit it to walking paths, but make it sort of connected. In some ways, we've got that here in that they didn't call it open space, but we did build that sidewalk all the way around Building One, as Lynn called it, and so.
And it continues around.
And it continues around, and I think when we come to look at the site plan, we want to be sure that those all connect.
So there's no intent for it to be contiguous?
Well, yes, it does, it connects to itself.
Well, I mean, the open spaces itself, not counting the sidewalk and paths, because it also says that, don't count the paths.
Well, it doesn't say, don't count the paths, but it should not be limited to those.
Not be limited to.
Yeah. But it was, but paths are allowed as part of it. It doesn't.
That's not what it says.
It just says you can't use them just for paths. They have to be some other usage. And that's what they, I think, they've tried to do here.
Yeah, I think that second part is certainly not saying that paths don't count as open spaces.
No.
It's saying that paths aren't the only thing that count as open spaces.
That's right.
Okay. Any further discussion on open spaces? What is your sense about whether this, well, I don't know, we're at the voting section, but consensus of the board. Do people generally feel that number eight is satisfied or not satisfied? One no, one yes, Brian?
Yeah, I'd say I feel.
I think it is.
Yes is over here. Okay. Number nine is compliance with the architectural design criteria set forth in some statutes. Architectural design really isn't a part of the conditional use process. We don't, the elevations could certainly change, and we may require that they change in site plan review. And so that one is kind of punted for next, for later. Ten is unreasonable impacts to adjoining properties or uses by way of light, noise, pollution, visual blight, odor, vibration, or other nuisance. The planning board may require preparation and review of such studies and assessments as it may deem necessary to demonstrate compliance with this requirement. I think that the staff sort of does not necessarily seize on this one as being an issue to address at this stage, and most of what would affect, impact here would be a site plan review. However, I want to make sure that we're giving it a deeper dive than that, because of how critical that is to the neighbors. What say you, board members? Who wants to weigh in on the unreasonable impacts question?
I can do that. Yeah. Well, we know about the light. We've been hearing about the light. We can see the pictures with the light. If you've driven by there at night, you can definitely see the light. So I don't disagree with that. And it's that light pollution that seems to be part of some of the biggest or the greatest number of comments that we get. The other is the increase in light, as it states here. In other words, we have garbage that gets spread all throughout the area. I've even driven down some of the roads, and it's not just regular, you know, cups from Dunkin' Donuts. It's, you know, long sheets of paper that seem to be blowing off of the site. So we'll have to definitely talk about that some more as well, on ways to contribute or control that going forward. Because the neighbors shouldn't be having to go and pick up construction garbage off their property. So. That's it.
I certainly agree with the conclusion. I didn't, I've never noticed the particular proliferation that you talked about. But obviously, yeah, they got to take care of their own trash. And certainly as a finished project, they've got to do the same, but. And certainly as a finished project, they've got to do the same, but I, I don't go there very often, so I don't want to say I
Well, once it's completed, you won't have a lot of that construction materials.
And, you know, what we're looking at here doesn't have things like where the dumpsters are going to go and all of that, that's site plan stuff. But, and they will certainly have to have them and they'll have to be screened and all that good stuff. But other unreasonable impacts to this. I think the neighbors certainly focused on light, but also a little bit of discussion about noise. And a little bit of discussion about the potential for people to be using the buffer, which is bringing the activities a little closer to them. Any other comments on those kinds of things? I think those relate to the same discussion we had before about potentially doing better plantings and, and better light fixtures. And, and both of those things can have some positive impact on that. And, and in doing it in a, in a focused way with some landscape architect that knows how to design these things rather than, you know. You probably know somebody, right? Somebody good.
This is Burns' fault.
Okay. Eleven is the general design criteria in a particular section of our regulations. And the staff notes that it's a bit of an overlap between that and section nine. So with all of that in mind. Board members, do you feel like there's things we want to have this applicant try and address for us related to these criteria that we've discussed? Or where do you want to go? What do you want to do?
I think some of the things that we've discussed, the applicant addressing are things that would be part of site plan review. Other than moving, swapping the buildings.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
I assume the buffering, you know, planting more trees, is that per Lynn's point? Would that be in site plan?
Yeah, that would. I think the things that would occur here if we chose to require them, I think really fall into the category one, which the, you know, the reasonable uses. Will the applicant, is the applicant willing to consider the event center and, and a little bit more of the retail? And, you know, that sort of thing. I think the number of units is like, much like the density, it's just a number. What I want to know is how, how will it impact traffic or pedestrians or parking spaces or lights or that sort of thing? I think the building height being reduced as it approaches the, the neighbors is certainly a good develop, a good step forward.
That, that was, I think that was significant. How they've reduced it. I, I'd, I'd like to see it even lower, but what they have done is, is pretty significant from where it was or from the parking garage.
I know we could address some of these things at site plan review, but as to the parapets that are on the ends of the building, do you guys plan to light those to the top? Or what's the sense of how those would exist from a light standpoint?
I believe that the opportunity to, for the developer to testify and enter evidence and information before the board has been closed. Isn't this the point of time when the board discusses among itself?
Thank, thank you for the comment, Mr. Milns. That isn't the case. The, the developer can continue to participate. But thank you.
The voters have an opportunity of addressing forward again and, and review some of the information that's been given.
Again, thank you for your comment there. If we end up continuing this to another evening, there very, very well could be a public hearing as a part of that. But the developer and the public don't stand in the same shoes necessarily in terms of responding to the board's comments. When we vote?
We close the meeting.
And we close the hearing.
Close the meeting.
Close the, yeah, actually the meeting. With that in mind, I want to turn back to the question that I wanted to pose to the developer.
Not tonight.
Not tonight, for sure.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, we would defer to the board in terms of, I mean, I, I guess I don't quite understand what you're talking about. You're talking about the downlighting that occurs on the existing building?
No, the building, well, obviously the building you're going to build is the one closest to the neighbors. And it's got the, the section you've lowered to about 40 feet through most of the building and then it gets taller on the ends.
Right.
And I was just wondering if there's any understanding of how those taller sections would be lit at night, if at all.
They, I, I mean, I don't believe that they would be lit. I mean, they, they have windows in them and the windows would have, you know, lights occasionally. But the, the building itself, I don't think there's any intention of, of lighting that facade.
Okay. And obviously I know in, in site plan review, instead of asking, we can tell.
Right.
Want to have happen.
Well, and, and keep in mind, the, the town also has a, a dark skies ordinance. So, you know, you can't really do upward you know, you can't, you can't do lights like that. You can't wash the, the, you can't uplight the side of the building, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Okay. Yes, please.
Is it possible to continue this meeting at another time? Because I feel like other people want to say stuff and I feel like people are going to make decisions because they're tired, because it's been a long time.
So yes, if it's the will of the board to continue it to another time, it's within the board's power to do that. I would think that there's a couple of reasons why we would want to make sure, we, we want to think about doing that. One is certainly if the applicant has more information that we'd like them to bring forward, we're asking them to go do something and bring it back for next time. Perfectly good reason for a continuance. And also to your latter point, I don't know that we ever used it before, but feeling like we're late night tired and shouldn't make a late night rash decision. Yeah, it's only 10 o'clock. We've certainly done later than this.
It used to be one o'clock.
But I, I think that we, we may be in that first category of asking the, the applicant to consider some other site changes. But I don't know. I, I only speak for me. What else does the board want to discuss with the applicant? Okay. We don't necessarily have to go through criteria by criteria and say who votes yes on number one, number two. Certainly if there's an overall motion to do something, it incorporates all of those things. I don't know if the board is prepared to do that. I personally was thinking that we would end up in a place where the applicant would have not necessarily as dramatic a change as they did between the last ones. But little things that they're responding to based on some of the, some of our feedback or information that they could fill in. Even though some of these things are site plans, the applicant certainly can certainly give us a forecast of directions they would take on some of the things that would make the buffer stronger, lighting less concerning or, and then obviously changing the square footage of retail or, or event space or any of those kinds of things. If the applicant so chose are definitely part of our condition, conditional use permit process. But if someone wants to make a motion and they're ready, then do that. I'm sorry. He wasn't, he couldn't hear us, so he had to be closer. What's that? Doesn't want to continue. What is the will of the board then for whatever you want to do? Floor's open. One way or another, whether we continue or do something else, it's a motion.
I was going to say, before I make a motion, I, I'm inclined to make a motion to approve this. With the information that we received tonight and and other, other material that's been submitted. There are minor things on here that need to be addressed, definitely, they're not minor, but they, they, things that need to be addressed at the time of site plan review. And I think we've highlighted a bunch of those. And I don't think bringing any more information to this board or to myself anyway, at this point in time would benefit either the applicant or us. I, I just they're minor. The, the fiscal analysis that Mr. Fugere prepared, I still have some issues with his memo. But they're not going to change the, the end result here. I think it's still going to be a positive impact, maybe a little different than his view of it. But so I'm ready to go ahead with a motion if the board feels that way. If the board wants to delay for reasons that I don't know, I'll, I'll listen to that.
And all I would say to that is since this is a board saw, there is no recommended conditions of approval for the board to attach to anything. We would recommend that you would continue it first so we could prepare some conditions of approval that you could rely on with such a motion.
Yeah, that was my main concern. If we approved it, we'd miss stuff.
Yeah. I would make such a motion that we, we just had an open, an opening night, didn't we, coming up? You said there was, there was nothing in May?
Our second May meeting, I think there's a submission deadline, although we're not asking them to submit anything, so.
Yeah.
Is it possible to continue to that?
Yes, the board could continue to May 16th.
I certainly think that there should be whatever staff, whatever conditions the staff provided. And it may also be that the staff has more to say on other things that we should think about and consider as well. Obviously that it, it is an unusual circumstance for us to arrive in a place that our staff didn't. Not that we're required to do what they say, but it's a little unusual for us, so I want to leave lots of room for that. That said, there probably is a second at the table for your motion if you had made it. And then
You can count that as a motion to defer to the next open meeting in May, which is
Sixteenth.
The 16th of May, yeah.
Continue to the 16th of May to allow time for the staff to prepare whatever conditions that thinks the board should have. Is there a second for Nelson's motion? So the public hearing closed when the three people were done talking. This is normally the way that we approach it, so. Thank you though.
With no further notice.
Yeah, with no further notice to a butters. Is there any other further discussion anybody wants to have before we make a vote on continuing it? I don't want to presume that because we've said the staff should prepare conditions of approval, that approval is inevitable. It obviously requires a vote and it may not pass.
Right. But based on the fact that we are
Hucked out.
Not, not agreeing with staff necessarily. I think it's only reasonable that we go back to them and say, based on, on what we've heard tonight and what we've gone through, that we'd like them to, to go through it and give us any recommendations they have.
Their, their conditions of approval are relatively essential to any, I mean, there's just routine housekeeping items that are in there. What's that? Yeah, and we still leave something important out. Okay, there is a motion properly seconded to continue this for our next meeting two weeks hence, the 16th of May. If there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? Seven zero zero to continue. Thank you all for the presentation and thank you for the butters for all that they've offered us as well to the consideration and discussion. The things that you've offered have not gone unheard. Let's see, somewhere I have an agenda that tells me what to do next.
Discussion.
The next thing is the minutes.
There we go.
Other items.
Planning and zoning administrators report and discussion of possible action area, that's what's certain. Robert, do you have a planning and zoning administrators report for us?
See ya.
No, nothing tonight.
Does anybody have any questions for staff on any various matters? I don't have any either. With that in mind, do board members have other items of concern they wish to discuss? I don't either, but thank you all again for the privilege of serving as the chair. I really do approach that humbly. You know, I think, I don't know how Nelson made the transition to not doing it, because I feel like if I had to sit over in the corner, I wouldn't stop talking. I'd keep calling for votes, like all in favor. I do that at meetings that aren't even mine, when I'm sitting on that side of the table. Can you just vote? Okay. I feel these folks have a question for us, so let's finish this meeting. Minutes of April 18th, 2023? Is there a second? Motion and a second discussion, Nelson?
I was going to second.
Oh, yeah. I thought you were, okay. Then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? April 18th is approved. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Somebody else got to make the motion, just one second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? Seven zero zero to adjourn, we are adjourned. Thank you all. Don't forget to turn your microphones off.